Hello.
All right, it's just gonna be another minute or two. We were just having some technical difficulties. Evening and welcome to the school committee's June 4th, 2020 meeting. It is 7:03 and I'm calling this meeting to order. And I just want to ask everyone on my screen, put yourselves on mute. Pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020, the Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, we will do a roll call attendance. Ms. Koshen?
Don't we have to move first to approve remote participation? No, okay, sorry. Yes, presence.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Ms. Shawnessy.
Present.
This is Lestevnik.
Present.
Ms. Naborski.
Present.
Ms. Hansdahl.
Present.
Mrs. Rafi, present. Is there a motion to approve and to participation only?
Your audio is cutting in and out, Stacy.
Yep, technical difficulties tonight. Can you hear me now? Okay, is there a motion to move into remote participation?
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Dawn.
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Dawn. Roll call vote. Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Shawnessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Ms. Hansdahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Okay. This evening, we are going to be jumping all over this agenda, so those of you who need to follow it step by step, you're gonna have to deal with the uncertainty tonight. We have a lot to cover and I'm trying to accommodate different schedules as some of our members need to jump off and attend the Select Board meeting in a little bit. So please bear with me while I go through the agenda in a mishmashed way. I'm gonna start right in with oral communications from the school committee. Could you raise your hand if anyone has something to say for public comments, school committee members? Nope. Okay, great. I actually have something to say. Before we begin this meeting and really jump into it, I think it's important that we set the example. And so we teach our kids that when we feel that their emotions are out of control or they feel out of control, we should do some mindfulness. So I just want everyone to take a moment to just take a deep breath, take a moment and think about why we're here. We're for each, we're here for each other as a community and we need to support one another and not fight like cats and dogs. Our world is in turmoil and I get that. And so I just want to take a moment and just remind each other that we're in this together. We are in this community because we want to be. We support our kids, we support our teachers, we support our administrators. And sometimes it feels like we might not be supporting one another, but I just want you to take that intention just for a minute and just take a moment to just take a deep breath. All right, Central Office. Brad?
I have one comment, but I'll include it under my COVID-19 update.
Peter?
I'm all set today.
Keith is hiding, so he may not have anything. And I am gonna need him momentarily to open it up for public comment, so bear with me for one moment. And if people are watching via Facebook, those who are trying to call in. Okay, so you know what? I am going to move public comments to a little bit later once we get the phone line to work. The phone line is not working, so I'm hoping that the people who were intending to speak tonight are watching via TVs and we will do public comments as soon as we get the phone line working. So, sorry about that. I'm gonna jump right to Ms. Kamiri's presentation on the extended school year. And Brad, if you need to, you wanna open that up?
No, I just wanted to thank Meg Kamiri for being here tonight and also for her service to our community. Meg will be moving on to an awesome opportunity where, in the school district where she was raised and where her mother worked as a teacher, and I know she is excited about that. We are all very sad to see her go. Tonight, she wanted to provide you with a brief update on where we are with our extended school year planning. And so I'd like with that, if with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd turn it over to Meg to share the ESY planning with the committee. Welcome, Meg.
Hi, Meg. Welcome. Hi, everyone. Good to see you in our own little squares. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I wanted to just take the time to sort of speak to the community regarding our extended school year planning. Holliston is one of the communities that is still remains hopeful that there will be an opportunity to serve a small number of students in person locally. We have, we just sent out a communication to all students and parents with disabilities last week indicating sort of our update of our status of where we are in our planning. Based on the Early Education Care, the EEC document that came out on June 1st, and in the anticipation of more information that we will receive from the Department of Education, we are sort of being able to narrow down our processes locally and we'll be able to make sure that those are in place to support students. So, kind of big picture where we stand. Typically, Holliston serves about 200 students who qualify for extended school year based on concerns regarding substantial regression. At this point, we are looking to serve maybe 25% of them in person in some small capacity. So in our letter out to parents, we indicated that the large majority of students who typically qualify for extended school year, which usually runs about five weeks between July, I believe it's July 6th this year and August 6th. The majority of them, we anticipate to serve remotely with, again, some students that we are hoping to still serve in person. All students will continue to have, whether we service them in person or remotely, remote learning support and service plans, so that that, again, will sort of document their educational services in a more defined manner for those that will receive services over the summer program. ESY takes a considerable amount of planning even when it is under normal circumstances. We're planning in March, April, and May, figuring out our staffing levels, our space that we need. We're communicating with families to get a sense of who's able to attend, who's not attending. And this year, we sort of increased that right away once school closure occurred. So our outreach to families had already included soliciting information for them if they were planning on sending their children, if it were in person, if it wasn't. We did the same with our staff hiring letters, so we have a good sense of folks who wouldn't, who are hesitant to be in person. And that comes from, you know, both students and staff. We indicated to families that we anticipate we are unable to provide transportation this summer for extended school year. Given what we've seen so far from the guidance, we do not, we're not hopeful that we'll be able to pull off the transportation piece in a timely and a safe manner and really wanted to focus our efforts on the preparedness of our nursing staff, so more so the health and safety and the facilities and maintenance component of everything that we need in place. We have also sort of considered things like speech-language services, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Those are services that do occur during extended school year. And in looking through some of the guidance, we've made decisions or we're anticipating that most of those services will need to continue to happen remotely. So we've really tried to shrink it as best we can, considering all the safety precautions and ways in which we can serve small amounts of children either individually or in small settings under one building roof in one, you know, in set classrooms with low amount of transitioning from space to space and adults transitioning from space to space. So we do plan, again, we're sort of targeting that somewhere between 40 and 50 students in our one building. We're planning on using Miller. We've been in close communication with Keith from a facilities and maintenance standpoint and Lynn Bowler and her nurses as we're establishing procedures regarding like screening and arrival, isolation, discharge of symptomatic, all of the information that you'll see that was provided from EEC. And again, we assume or we anticipate that Desi will be putting out further guidance so that we can move to safely serve some students in our building in July and August. I'll pause there, Ms. Rafi, and see if there's any sort of questions. That was a big general overview, just so folks had a sense.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the committee? Lisa?
Hi, Meg. We're gonna miss you so much. I can't believe that we're not gonna have you with us, but I wish you the best. They're so lucky to have you. I have one quick question. When, how are they gonna decide who's in person and who's remotely? What are some of the criteria that we're looking at for that?
Yeah, that's a great question, right? That's one of our big million-dollar questions, other than can kids wear masks? And that came out thankfully in EEC. They provided some guidance there regarding students who might have trouble wearing masks. So anyway, the other big question would be, who are those children? Because there's a lot of clearly sort of tension between if we have to choose and we know we have reduced ratios, who are we gonna service in person? So one of our top criteria was really assessing students given their disability and their skill development area who are really struggling to progress through the remote learning world. So who are those students that we would typically want to bring in in person? We also were really looking at students who in person would have new skills that they might need to develop as we're moving into sort of a new normal. And so right now, we're really trying to look at our various service models and not look at sort of, okay, this is typically students who would access direct social skills instruction. Is that the group that we want to bring in because they really limited their social interactions that have occurred through a remote world? So in the letter that we sent out to parents and guardians, we indicated that the majority of our children who access tutoring services, so a large population for ESY is accessing tutoring, whether it's reading, writing, and math, we anticipate that the majority of the students who access those services will get those remotely. So when we think of students really who are struggling with our remote learning plan and the profile, those are typically our students who have more longer duration of services during our extended school year. So we're still sort of fine-tuning it, looking at the current data in terms of engagement and remote learning, considering the skill development areas for students and plan to, once Desi has their final stuff out, indicate it to parents. So far, what I can tell you, it's been somewhat comforting, the parents we've heard from who are saying, "I really want to send my children to you," we're saying, "We really want to see your kid, like, we want your kids to come in person." So I think already the parents who are reaching out to us are those students that we would, we have already sort of had on our radar based on the criteria that we're using to assess this, based on our list of children.
Thank you.
Ken?
Hi, Meg. We are gonna miss you terribly. I'm so happy for you with this opportunity, but I just wanted to let you know how much we're gonna miss you. I did have one question. I was wondering what the timeframe, what you're hoping to be able to let parents know about. I know you still have to wait for guidelines from Desi, so I just didn't know what you're hoping for, because I know ESY is supposed to start, you know, very soon, so.
Yeah, so at this point, what our plan is to continue to sort of do a weekly outreach to parents. So we sent out that most recent letter. I'm hearing that some parents, it's either ending up in their spam folder or they're not receiving it. So if you're hearing of parents who are not getting the email blasts and they have a child with a disability, please make sure they're contacting myself or their SSA. We are also, I failed to mention, we started last week, we're doing weekly meetings with our ESY staff. So typically, we don't meet with them until school year is over. We have a whole planning day with them without students there, so uninterrupted, so we can review healthcare plans, behavior plans, whatever it is. This year, because of, you know, our whole institution has been upended, we've started, we met last Friday with our ESY staff. We're gonna meet with them again tomorrow, just to keep doing a touch base with the staff. And we had that one sort of communication out to all parents and we'll continue to do that on a weekly basis. And then as we have individual students identified for the in-person, those parents will hear on an individual level. I mean, all parents will know whether their child is remote or in person.
Meg, could you just share one or two of the criteria that's being set by the Department of Education in terms of what you need to do, like what you're being mandated to do, so that people understand the, I guess, severity of how difficult this is to implement this and, you know, that I guess if people aren't familiar with extended school year, they're not gonna understand, you know, well, of course you can have it or of course you can't. Could you just share maybe one or two examples of what you need to consider?
Absolutely. And so right now, again, I just want to acknowledge, we are really working off of the EEC document. So Early Education Care, essentially that document that came out June 1st was for minimum health requirements to help guide sort of camps and programs. So we're, that's the, we're operating under those guidelines with the anticipation that the Department of Ed will push out further. But so, for example, two components of those minimum health requirements, one includes the screening of both staff and students. And so in working with Lynn Bowler, we've talked about sort of setting up procedures in place where we need to take non-touch or non-contact temperature checks for students and staff upon arrival, record that. There's a quick, a brief sort of question that you need to ask the staff and students upon arrival and then essentially ask them, you know, about symptoms and their contact with anybody who might have prevented with symptoms. So there's criteria, again, regarding sort of that entrance of staff or students into your program with one point of entry and the health check component of it. Another piece of the minimum health requirements that we're seeing in this EEC doc, and we anticipate Desi will have something similar regarding ESY, is ratios. So ratios in terms of in your classroom space, the idea of sort of social distancing and what's the square footage you want to have around students spacing out. There's a lot of information in the document and in the guidelines regarding sort of sharing of materials. So we've had to consider having sort of set cobbies for students and limiting their sharing of sort of materials. What's the disinfectant process for cleaning sort of blocks? So things that we might not typically experience in terms of having kids, you know, a certain square footage away from one another are now being talked, you know, are in this, this minimum health guidelines that we're needing to comply with in order to safely serve children in our building. There's a whole bunch more, but I might bore you, but I hope that-
No, no, thank you. That was good. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Meg? No? Okay. Meg, did you want to add anything else or?
No, I can just say that through the transition process that Kelly Kent has become more actively involved in the extended school year planning. So she's really been caught up to speed, but thanks to the really amazing work of Debbie Holleran, who's been sort of the logistical person behind our extended school year for many years, and Victoria Briggs, who are our extended school year coordinator, we really continue to remain hopeful that we are safely able to service some students in our building and we welcome them back in our building as safely as we can. So, thanks. People know how to reach me if they have any other questions. Oh, Lisa.
Sorry. Can I, Stacy, can I just ask one more quick one? When should parents, when do you think approximately parents will find out the, their own personal ESY plan? When should parents be on the lookout for finding out what their schedule might be and whether they're virtual or in person and, you know, the sort of the details?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the Department of Ed is putting something out again, either this week they were supposed to, that really provided further guidance locally regarding extended school year. So we're hoping within the next two weeks, we really just have to sort of make those decisions, whether the state provides it or not for families. So you might see one more sort of general out push to parents talking about extended school year and then anticipate a more individualized information regarding your child if they access ESY. So within the next two weeks, we've got to let families know for sure.
Great. Thank you, Meg. I'm gonna let you go, because I know it's witching hour. But I would actually like to invite you to our last meeting so that we can properly say best of luck on your next chapter, because we're not ready to do that right now. So if you-
I'm not ready either, so.
Good. If you can save the date for us, that would be awesome.
Okay, will do. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Take care.
All right, Keith, I'm, we, I'm gonna open public comment. If you can just remind everyone, I really want that. I, we really need to be the three-minute mark. Yours.
Okay, phone number 617-306. You are on now. Please identify yourself and your address, and by school committee policy, you have three minutes to make comment. you have three minutes to make comments. Okay, I'll mute you and go to the next one. The next one is 202, let me just move, I made 202, eight something, oh, nine, eight, seven, nine. Need better glasses. Please identify yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to make public comments.
Hi, this is Frank Sobchak. I live at 815 Highland Street in Holliston. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Addressing our children's academic needs is unquestionably the most important way we could spend our time, and those needs are not currently being met. When decisions were made to close schools in March, we did not have much information about COVID-19. As a result, we all made the best possible decisions with the information that we had at the time, and I do not find fault with those decisions. Now, however, we have considerably more reliable information. With that information, I urge you to focus upon returning the majority of students back to the in-person classroom in the fall. We should focus on returning the majority of students to the classroom for many reasons. Under the remote learning model, students' academic development is suffering. Many students were receiving more contact hours in a single day during traditional school than they are receiving in an entire week of remote learning. This was acceptable with what we knew about COVID in March, but it is not now. Media reports indicate anywhere between 10% and 20% of students in some districts have not logged on at all to remote learning, and as many as 30% miss at least a session a week. I would be very interested to know what those statistics are in Holliston. I know anecdotally that some parents have given up on the model and have reverted to homeschooling based on the failure of remote learning. Using Zoom as a medium to learn is fraught with problems, especially for younger children who can be easily distracted. Studies show that remote learning has led to an increase in online bullying, child abuse, and class-based disparities in education. Holliston has a great school system, and many parents have made the tough decision to move here and pay high property taxes so their children have the opportunity to benefit from our superb program. If students are not returned to the brick-and-mortar traditional schools in the fall, this begs the question, why are we paying such high taxes for an inferior remote education? This is not what we signed up for. Preliminary discussions indicate that if our students do not return to an in-person education five days a week in the fall, Holliston taxpayers could be legally entitled to a refund or deduction for a proportion of our property taxes earmarked for the schools. A reasonable plan would be to create a model where most students return to the classroom, but a portion attend remotely, having the same school day and attending via video link, hour for hour, day by day. We should respect families who either have members who are at risk from COVID or who are not comfortable returning their children to the in-person school. Roughly 35% of the U.S. has a health factors that might put family members at risk for COVID. If those students do not attend in person, it would contribute to less crowded, excuse me, crowded classrooms for those students who do attend. We have the time now to plan for this and to take action so as to facilitate the return of the majority of the students to class in the fall. Failing to do so would mean we would be failing our children. Thank you for our time. Hello? Hello?
Thank you, sir.
Let me see if 617-306, are you there now? If so, please identify.
Good evening. My name is John Winchenbach. My wife Margie and I have two daughters in the Holliston Public School System, Abby, a freshman in high school, and Ellie, a seventh grader at Adams. As echoed by others, I'd like to thank the school committee and administration for the immense amount of challenging work you're doing to serve our students and community. I commend you for reaching out now to parents in the community to invite our crucial perspective as part of the planning process for the 2020-2021 academic school year, before final guidance is provided by the CDC, Desi, and the governor. There's much to plan and execute. Please know that along with our extremely dedicated teachers and support staff, we appreciate that you recognize that parents and guardians are here to help offer important insights to support and successfully implement the best possible academic solution for our students, which is our top priority. For context, I'm a small business owner advising, empowering, and educating clients whose solutions can only be effectively adopted by focusing on effective learning. I'm also an adjunct professor at Framingham State for the better part of 10 years now, teaching a variety of courses in their undergraduate business and IT program. Based on these qualifications, I feel that I have a good understanding of how to effectively structure learning environments to meet the various accommodation requests from students of all ages, learning styles, and backgrounds. As part of a seven-member task force invited to discuss and provide you our perspectives on planning for the upcoming academic year, let me share two key perspectives. Recognize that much of this input assumes that we have the authority to decide upon our own model or aspects thereof to implement versus being 100% constrained by a directive from Desi. We recognize that there are several reentry options being evaluated, and I ask the school committee to consider the following. Number one, academics need to be our top priority as opposed to identifying equally weighted items, of which academics is but one priority. This should be our collective goal to the deprioritization of other activities, including extracurricular activities. Providing education after all is the charter of our school teachers, administrators, teachers, and support staff. I think there are many of us, perhaps a majority, who recognize that the current remote learning plan is woefully inadequate, and that continuing with this approach certainly will cause risks of larger learning gaps that will compound, and that will need to be remediated somehow. So how can we mitigate risks under a full reentry or hybrid model? Let's look at the two models. Model one, full reentry in September, five days a week with logistical safety measures applied, or implement a plan to transition to a full reentry model at a more opportune date if additional planning time is needed. We know that any reentry plan, full or hybrid, must consider safety for all as paramount. Considerations for transportation, entry/exit from schools, and in-classroom social distance protocols are just a few of the major items that need sound planning to make any return effective. For example, if we considered leveraging other available open space to hold classes with appropriate logistics applied, I think of the potential offered by reconfiguring auditoriums, bandrooms, libraries, activity rooms, gymnasiums, courtyards, parking lot space, hall space, or perhaps in warmer months, renting large tents with sides to allow physically more students to congregate that may be permitted, that may otherwise not be permitted in a classroom. We need to be creative with the space we have in any reentry scenario, and with equipping staff with the tools to effectively reach all students if physical distance learning requires it. For example, portable whiteboards or easel pads, et cetera. Have we considered having students eat at classroom desks rather than congregating in the cafeteria? Just two examples. But the bigger point I want to make here is that the planning process should consider a commitment to planning and executing full reentry, perhaps before vaccines available. If more time is needed to allow decision-makers to properly plan for the required logistical needs for all scenarios, then let's take the time now to develop this plan so that we don't plan and execute a model that promotes a suboptimal learning environment any longer than absolutely necessary. We know we may need to pivot between learning models anyway, so why not commit now to plan for full reentry at an optimal time rather than considering a non-full reentry model to be the model for the entire academic year? Maybe this means deferring the full reentry until November or December, or later still, but not considering this does not serve the best academic interests of our students. And model two, the hybrid model, only if mandated by Desi. And a hybrid model.
Chair, excuse me, I'm calling for a point of order. Mr. Winchenbach, I absolutely appreciate what you're saying. And in fairness to other people that are waiting, I think you've exceeded the three minutes. You've submitted your written comments, which we thank you very much for. And please don't take this as a slight, or we're not interested in what you're hearing. I'm a parliamentarian at heart, and you're well over your time. So if you could finish in an expeditious manner, we'd really appreciate it.
Certainly. So the hybrid model, with this in mind, we need to, we need to really look at the, assess the technology tools to ensure their best features are utilized by the teachers to meet varying learning styles of the students, again, which has been woefully inadequately planned and executed. So we do need to set the learning agenda and expectation at the start of each class session, set the expectation that active listening and student interaction is required to build the expectation into the grading scheme, and finally, to have dedicated time for students to learn in a more relaxed form online. I'll close by saying that we know that safety is the most important factor with considering any model for reentry, but we know that other local school districts are advocating and planning for this, Concord Carlisle, Waldham, and others. Thanks for inviting me to speak tonight. I hope this perspective is helpful. I encourage you to read my statement more fully, as it's more comprehensive than time permits. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Keith, do you want to call the next one?
I will. Seven, number keeps moving, 774-292-9291. You're unmuted. Please identify yourself and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. My name is Gemma Sampas. I'm a senior, or I guess I was as of last Friday. And I recently posted a comment under Brad Jackson's remarks that he posted on Facebook. And so I was hoping to just reiterate some of the things that I said on that comment. So the first thing that I'd like to say is I just want to give a shout out to my teacher, Christine Chesna, because when I was in her communications class during junior year, it was a semester long, and she devoted the entire semester to teaching us about wrongful conviction and exoneration and restorative justice and just prison reform in general. And we actually got to speak to a man who was wrongfully convicted for 12 years. And then I also spoke to a man who had had his life kind of turned around by restorative justice after he was convicted. And that was just a, that really stood out to me in my high school career as a time where she, you know, acknowledged her privilege and decided to take this class, which was open-ended, and make it into something where we would hear from Black voices, and we would hear about injustice and confront our own bias and the ways in which that we have been socialized, as I kind of said in my comment. And then another thing that I was talking about in that was just how I am really upset about the fact that over the four years that I spent at HHS and over the 12 years I spent in the Holliston Public School System, I never had a Black teacher. And I didn't say this in my comment, but I also never really learned about slavery comprehensively. I never read a book by a Black person. And I just feel like there was, there was content that was lacking in that regard. And I could see the effect of that in the words that my classmates used to each other. And I'm just thinking even last week, one of my last classes, I was in a history class, and we were talking about the protests. And on police brutality, my history teacher said, it is what it is. And so that was just very shocking to me, and I had to speak out against that after he said that. And it was uncomfortable, but I think that, you know, the most growth happens, especially as a student, when you're uncomfortable. And so I think that, you know, I realize that it's a process, and I realize that, you know, we live in a state where proportionally, maybe there's less teachers of whatever background, and I understand all of that. But I just think that for my sister, who's a freshman, I would just love to see her maybe even hear from a Black voice who was just coming in for a day to do a talk, or a new teacher. And then, also just thinking about Foundations of 21st Century Learning, when I took it, it seemed a little aimless, but I know my sister had a much more rigorous class. But I think that that class could be sort of an opportunity for a remodeling where students could be educated, especially coming into the school as freshmen in the beginning of high school, educated just about race relations in the country and confronting everything that I said before about their own biases and their own ways in which they are racist and have microaggressions. And maybe speakers could be brought in through that, as Ms. Chesna did with my communications class, or maybe someone could partner with her in bringing that curriculum into foundations, because I think that that's something that every student should have the opportunity to learn about and have a hands-on experience with, as I and my classmates in that class had. So, yeah, that's kind of, those are kind of my thoughts. I'm always happy to speak out about this, because I think that I wouldn't really be able to live with myself if I didn't. So that's kind of what I have to say. I realize that it's a process, but I think that, you know, those little suggestions, those are what come to mind for me. And, yeah, thank you so much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Gemma. And on behalf of the committee, we are so proud of you and your fellow classmates, and we congratulate you on graduation. And based on what you've just shared with us, we know you have an incredibly bright future, and you are gonna change the world. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Vision of a Holliston graduate, ladies and gentlemen.
Keith?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for joining us.
You're unmuted. Please identify yourself and your address.
Yes, this is Barbara Fritz Warby. What address are you asking me for?
Well, your home address.
Oh, my home address, 83 Rolling Meadow Drive in Holliston.
Thank you. Feel free to comment.
Okay, I'm just letting you know that I haven't been able to be privy to any of the meeting thus far. I have no idea what's going on, because I was on hold and didn't, I couldn't hear any of it. So I, can anybody give me a little recap as to what's happening thus far so that my statement makes sense?
Oh, we're just in the public, this is Lisa, Barbara. We're in the public comment portion, so this is just a chance for you to share thoughts that you have. So the only thing you've heard is people talking about various subjects.
Okay. Okay, just in general, about anything. Okay. So I, I mean, I was invited tonight, I think, to speak on behalf of diverse Holliston that were obviously really invested in the school system, trying to take issues of diversity seriously, race probably being at the top of the list, but not to diminish any of the other forms of identity that we all need to be looking at. And I, you know, frankly, I've read a whole bunch and heard a whole bunch from high school students speaking out that could probably say it way better than I could, is what they feel is needed. But we want to see, diverse Holliston wants to see action right now. We, people in our group are frustrated, particularly people of color. They feel like it's, this has been a long time in coming, and we've been hearing these things take time, we need to prioritize curriculum changes. But this, this is part of the curriculum change that needs to happen. This is part of professional development. We feel it needs to be embedded in every level. And clearly, this has impacted people so deeply to the core that we've had large demonstrations in our little town put on by high school students. It was remarkable. But we want to see the school actually following up. And if you intend to, the school committee says they want to work with us, and we're happy to work with them, but we don't want it to just be lip service. We're tired of that. We want to be, we want to actually, you know, be invited to be sharing our ideas and want to see some more level of commitment that this is actually being taken seriously. Did everyone hear that?
Yes.
Okay. That's pretty much what I had to say.
Great. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
And that's it, Stacy.
Thank you. Okay, we are gonna jump out of line again. I'm going to open the COVID-19 school closure update so that we can invite Principal Bottomley and Chief Stone to our virtual table. And then we need to jump into budget, and then we'll go back to COVID-19 a little later. and then we'll go back to COVID-19 a little later. So with that being said, Ms. Bottomley, uh, Chief Stone, welcome.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having us.
And jump right in, Nicole.
Sure, um, so we were asked to come here this evening just to give a quick overview of the senior car parade that's taking place on Sunday. We're incredibly excited about it. Um, I feel every moment that we continue to plan for this, we not only become more excited, but we are constantly reminded of the teamwork and collaboration within this community with fire and police and the schools, um, school committee, uh, community members, businesses, parents, guardians, students. It really has been a tremendous team effort, and, um, I'm thrilled with how it's turning out, so, uh, probably the one thing we really can't control is the weather, and I'm hoping that it's going to be beautiful on Sunday. So far, it's looking good, but we are very excited. Um, Chief Stone was able to work his magic and create a fantastic parade route through town. It's a little under 11 miles. It will not get to every street in Holliston, but it is going through as many neighborhoods as we could. We have currently, um, at last check, about 190 cars that are participating in the parade. So our ste, our seniors were allowed to have one car with a parent or guardian, um, or, you know, family members in the car. We asked that a parent or guardian drive the car, so that our seniors can really focus on the excitement of the parade, the celebrations, they can be waving, they can be, you know, smiling and, and talking to, to others as we go along, um, but so that we can have a parent or guardian who is really focused on driving conditions. It is, as I said, an incredible collaborative effort with fire and police departments in town. We have a number of emergency personnel who are helping us pull this off, but the students will be starting, the students will arrive to the Woodland Campus, so Placentino, Miller, and Adams, although they're coming into Placentino, they will be arriving, starting at 12:30. Our parade starts right at 1 o'clock. It will go through the parade route that was published. We sent an email blast out to parents and guardians of grades nine through 12. I believe it's also going to be out in, um, Holliston Reporter. I know that, uh, HCAT also has a copy of the parade route, and I know Chief Stone and others have also been tweeting that out and putting that through, um, social media. Yes, Ms. Rafi?
We did, we did, we, um, the PTO took the police department's post, because who can beat the police department's post? They are phenomenal. They are so awesome. Uh, so we took them and we shared them with the elementary, um, PTO class pages as well, so I just wanted you to know we, we spread the news.
Thank you, and I, I believe, um, other people have been posting it, um, you know, everywhere they can, so that the town is aware. Uh, the parade will start right at 1 o'clock. It will go over, as I said, um, an 11-mile route through town, and it will end at the high school. At the high school, the students will be coming in, driving in, and doing a loop around the high school, waving to our high school, honking their horns, celebrating a huge milestone in their lives, and then we do have a number of faculty who will be on campus, um, to wave and support our students as well, and then they will, will head off of school grounds. Given the number of vehicles involved, given the number of emergency personnel involved, and given the safety restrictions that we have in place, we will not be stopping at the high school, um, and the, the high school and the school buildings are still closed, so those families, uh, or neighbors, community members who want to participate in the parade, please do so from your, your front steps, from your, you know, front lawns, wave, celebrate. Um, we encourage you to decorate your homes and to have balloons and banners and, you know, anything else you want to do to, to celebrate the seniors, but we're, we're really looking forward to this event. Um, a lot of hard work has gone into it, but it's nothing compared to the hard work of our students over the duration of their high school, middle school, and elementary school careers, so we're really looking forward to it.
Chief, do you want to add anything in terms of safety to remind the public what, what safety might actually look like and involve?
Uh, the only thing I would add is that we've, we've been preparing for this for about three weeks, myself, Nicole, Chief Cassidy, uh, Superintendent Jackson, we've all been working on this collaboratively. Uh, I would just say, we had a demonstration yesterday that was, we had less than 24 hours notice, and we pulled it off very successfully, so I think with the amount of planning that we put into this and the, uh, amount of messaging we put out, I anticipated a very, uh, happy and, and, uh, celebratory, uh, event, if you will. We have a number of our officers, I, I won't say it doesn't go on taxing on us, I mean, we have a number, I think last count, we had 21 officers, you know, available for Sunday, so it does involve, uh, closing intersections and, and highways and, you know, state roads and downtown, but, uh, we know the importance of this, we're working with the fire department, and we have no doubt that this will go off smoothly, and, uh, very happy for our 2020 seniors, so.
We really appreciate all of the effort that you've all put into this. Uh, this is, this is extraordinary times, and you're doing great things, and we really appreciate that. Does anyone from the committee have any particular, you know, specific questions before I let them go? Joan?
I don't want to, I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you so very much, uh, Chief Stone and, and Principal Bottomley, Chief Cassidy, for making this happen. Um, this was not an easy thing to do, and we see our police and fire departments as our partners and our friends, and thank you so very much for all you put into this. I can't wait. Oh, and, by the way, Chief Stone is probably going to say, um, Ms. Shaughnessy, you're not invited, you don't have a senior, I have a ride in the ladder truck, but to that end, I don't think-
What about the rest of us, Joan?
-that a couple is invited in the parade. Like, I think we're not encouraging families that do not have graduates to get on, and maybe that's what you were about to say, Chief.
Uh, that was the second thing I was about to say, but the, the first, I would say, uh, we would encourage the public to sit on their front lawns, along sidewalks, sit along the route, uh, that's part of the reason why we publish the route ahead of time. Uh, we work collaboratively, like I said, with the public schools and the fire department, we want people to be out there. Uh, we just had one in my hometown, and we were out there, my kids, my family. It's a great event for kids to participate in, uh, but we, we just ask that you stay along the route. Uh, my second comment is, uh, police and fire are always hap, happy to help, uh, along with the schools, but I do have to give public, um, credit to Nicole, and Nicole has been a steadfast, this was her project, uh, she came to us and asked us how we could make this happen. Uh, we've talked about this for a long time, and we, uh, myself and Chief Cassidy, who's on the select board meeting right now, um, said, "Whatever you need, whatever you're thinking in your head, just give it to us on paper and we'll make it work." So I have to give, uh, probably 80% of the credit to, uh, to Nicole, because she's been, she's been the rock along this whole way, so.
Team effort all the way.
Great, well, thank you, guys.
Could I?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could I just, I just need to say something, because I have been trying to double team between this and the, uh, select board meeting here, and I didn't get to hear a word that you said tonight, and I'm really bummed, because I'm the one who asked you to come tonight, but I just want to thank you for doing that. Um, both Nicole and Matt, thank you for making the time. I know this is an extraordinary effort, on top of everything else you're managing, especially this week, and I just really want to give a shout out to you and the entire Holliston Police Department, um, for making this happen. Your support has been incredible, and Nicole, I know how much this added to your to-do list over the last several weeks, and it was exceptional, and I know how much angst it caused, because keeping everybody safe, ensuring everyone can engage, and all that participation is huge, and, um, it made, it meant the world to the kids, this is what they wanted, and hopefully it won't rain, so thank you for that. How many kids are we up to now? It was like 190 earlier.
We're at 190. I have a, a few students that I need to add that weren't able to, we had them, um, pre-register through a Google form, and they had some technical difficulties, so I have a, a few students to add, but we're, you know, we're going to be just shy of 200 vehicles, and that is not an easy feat to, to pull off. Um, so thank, thankfully, we have the expertise of fire and police to help us navigate that. Um, the students also, I, I do want to, um, say, our, our senior class officers have done a tremendous job, uh, our advisors as well, this is not what they envisioned when they came into their senior year, and, um, for our four senior class officers, they've done everything we've asked of them and more, including when I mentioned on Tuesday that I heard from another community, um, that the, the students put together a playlist of music, and we have a radio station that's actually going to play that playlist for seniors. They immediately, um, took hold of that and, and put it on Facebook, and they're putting together a list of songs, so they have been tremendous through this process, um, and really have been, been, um, advocating strongly for the senior class, um, which I think is a positive, a really good student voice, they've been advocating strongly, and I love that, um, but it's all with a really positive intention, and, um, I, I think that the senior class in general should be really proud to have them as the, as their officers, because they've done a really nice job, and our advisors as well, um, so and our, and our class parents, and, you know, everybody involved, it's been, it's been definitely a team effort, so.
Chief, please can I add something?
Uh, the only thing I was going to add, and, and Louise, is I think you've known our commitment from the Holliston Police and Fire to the schools, uh, from the very beginning of mine, but if you missed anything at all, uh, this was Nicole's idea, this was Nicole's plan, and we have, uh, we have carried out, but I would give kudos to the, uh, administration and to the school, uh, for making this happen, and we're just happy to be a part of it, so.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's, it's great. Thank you, Matt. I feel like I know everyone of you, your officers, and, um, I know what a lot of work goes into it, so, um, thank you, and Nicole's done a tremendous job. We've been with her for the last several weeks, and, yeah, it's a lot, a lot of late-night emails, too.
All right, well, let's let them go, because they got a big weekend ahead of them, so good night. Thank you. See you Sunday.
Sounds good, thanks, everyone.
Brad?
And Louise, can you mute?
Brad, you know what, why don't we just finish COVID-19, I'll do all in there, and then I will go back up to, um, policy and personnel.
All right, and, and minutes as well, we still have to get the minutes, okay. Um, well, to complete, uh, actually, we had, we had a separate agenda item for the parade, but to complete, uh, the COVID-19 closure update, um, I did want to address two issues. Uh, Stacy had asked me, Mrs. Rafi had asked me to address some parent questions that she's receiving, um, uh, about, uh, whether there were any plans for, uh, summer camps. Uh, we are not aware of any. At this point in time, at the request of the Emergency Management Director, Comedian Field remains closed. Um, that is essentially, um, due to the fact that, um, uh, we, the, neither the town nor the school department has, has the resources to, um, to supervise that field, to ensure that proper social distancing, uh, protocols are being kept up. Um, so at the request of, of the, um, Emergency Management Director, the Comedian Field remains closed. So at this point in time, um, I don't have any record of any requests for, uh, use of school fields for summer camps. Um, in terms of captains' practices, first of all, just to be clear, captains, there, there are no organized sport, high school sporting events that can take place before late August, so, um, any and all events that are taking place, um, are not school sanctioned and are not being run or coordinated by the school. So if students are doing what are colloquially called captains' practices, they are doing it without our knowledge and without our consent and without our support. So I cannot offer any information to the community about which, what group is doing what, because those issues, um, if we become aware of them, we have an obligation to stop them, because they are illegal in, in the eyes of the MIAA. Um, in terms of, uh, the plans for fall sports in general, um, that does go along with, um, some of the other planning that is going on, um, but that in, in and of itself is an issue that is almost exclusively 100% in the hands of the MIAA, um, and not up to local school districts. Um, if and when they, uh, make decisions, or if they ever, uh, defer decisions to local leagues or local school districts, uh, we could then have an opportunity perhaps to, uh, to, uh, to weigh in, uh, but there has never been any indication that they have any, um, plans to do that. So, um, at this point in time, we are 100% at the mercy of the MIAA regarding fall sports. Um, we have issued, uh, or in the process of issuing, um, our fall sports coaching, um, assignments, uh, and hiring letters. Um, those are being issued, um, with the, um, caveat that they, uh, should the sport run, um, and, uh, because I, it is, again, an issue, uh, that, um, the Holliston Public Schools unfortunately has no control over at this time. Um, the other COVID-19 update I wanted to give, uh, to you folks was, um, that in a, uh, in his, um, we had a, uh, Monday, um, uh, Zoom meeting with the commissioner, all the superintendents in Massachusetts, uh, he insists that the, uh, the, uh, fall, um, guidelines for opening in the fall are, uh, will be forthcoming in mid-June. He has, he suggested, he didn't suggest, he stated in the meeting that they will be 85 to 90% prescriptive. Um, his intent that he described is that the, um, this will be a statewide coordinated decision, um, regarding, um, whether schools can open, uh, fully through, uh, through a, what he keeps calling a 50-50 hybrid model, or 100% remote. Um, he also seemed to indicate, um, and this part was a little vaguer, that they may go as far as to, um, suggest, um, a, uh, a method for, um, for, uh, do, for dividing students in a 50-50 model. Um, he was discouraged, uh, by superintendents, uh, from going that far, uh, because of some of the, uh, because we want to have some level of local control here, um, but, uh, that is the information that we have from, come, forthcoming from the state. Um, nonetheless, our building-based task forces are underway. Um, each school has, um, has received over a dozen, um, teacher volunteers, uh, to participate on these task force. Um, I'm also working collaboratively with the, uh, leadership of the HFT to develop a clear memorandum of understanding of, as to what the, uh, what the, what the, uh, what decisions and, uh, even topics the task forces can and cannot, uh, work on. Uh, the HFT is extremely, um, uh, focused on, um, ensuring, and rightfully so, that their collective bargaining rights is the exclusive bargaining agent for the Holliston teachers are not, is not infringed on by, uh, by any of these groups. Um, that is not our intent, uh, but nonetheless, uh, we are working together to, uh, to try to establish some written guidelines that these groups can, uh, that we can, uh, issue to these groups, um, jointly, so that they're, so that the, um, the, uh, kind of the, um, the field of play is well-defined. Um, so, uh, however, while those guidelines are still under discussion, the task forces are, um, have, have begun to meet, some are dividing, um, into subgroups, others are, um, working together as a group. Um, I know that, uh, Bill and Placentino, the, the, um, the task forces are meeting, um, on, I think, uh, they said Wednesday or Tuesday evenings, like, one was Tuesday and one was Wednesday, I forget which one. So there's some, uh, good work going on, putting some plans together. Um, in spite of the commissioner's, um, assertions, um, and in spite of some of the concerns that may have been expressed by a, uh, by a, uh, by one of the commenters earlier this evening, uh, the, uh, it is highly unlikely that the Holliston Public Schools or the town of Holliston will be able to select a- be able to select a model independent of the one prescribed to us by the state. In other words, I am working under the assumption that the state is going to say, schools may open at 50% capacity or schools may open at 100% capacity with, with social distancing or schools may not open. And that that will, that decision will not be left to local schools, districts, or to local boards of health to make. That is the, that is the assumption I'm working under. And, and that, and that is actually, and I consider the hybrid model to be, in some ways, the most complex to plan, certainly the most expensive to execute. And the remote learning portion of the hybrid model, the work we do there will benefit if we ever either have to when we open or at some point in time during the school year revert to a remote learning plan. So I think it actually covers pretty much all of our bases. So I've continued to ask those task forces to continue to work on that, and that is their goal. The Commissioners has, continues to promise us that this guide, these guidelines and guidance will be available the week of June 15th. And I am, I, I'm becoming a little more hopeful, given the fact that the progression of the virus seems to be, at this moment in time, a tad more predictable than it was a month ago. And that some of the efforts of the state to, to control growth have seen some level of success, that we may be able to move forward with a plan, with sharing a plan at, hopefully a moderate level of specificity with families, hopefully as early as the 1st of August. That, again, does take some assumptions into consideration, particularly that the virus and the, the path of the virus continues on a predictable path. If the virus deviates from a predictable path, then I suspect the, the decision-making that we will have to make might be delayed. But I'm hopeful that that won't be the case.
So Brad, to your, to that very point, the chief actually just texted me to say, to remind people about social distancing and to wear their masks at the parade because people will be congregating. So to your point about the virus spreading or not spreading, he wanted to remind people to make sure you wear your mask and you stay six feet away from each other to that point. And then my, I have a question.
That's why my phone was hanging behind me. That was Matt telling me the same thing.
And then I, I do want to go back before I open it up to questions. Your first piece of your update, next week Governor Baker is supposed to talk about phase two, you know, more reopening, et cetera. Is there any possibility that during that phase, Comedian Fields would open? Or are we presuming that where Comedian Fields will be closed until August?
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not making any presumptions around how long. These are week-by-week decisions that, that are made in consultation with the Emergency Management Director and the Local Board of Health. So I, I am following their lead on this because it is a, it, it, with school closed, it is essentially a town use facility. And the responsibility of 24/7 for supervision of that facility goes to my good friend Chief Stone and his fine staff. So we, so those, those, that, that is, it's, at this moment in time, it's closed and that, that decision is, will be reviewed and revisited as necessary.
Okay, thank you. So committee, any questions on Brad's update? Lisa?
I think it would be good, even though we're in another one of those stages where we don't know a lot, I think it would be good to still communicate something to the community next week, explaining what we're expecting. Basically, everything you just said, I think, is news. And I don't think that most people watch school committee meeting. And I, I think that particularly after hearing the public comments tonight, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of confusion out there about, about what we can and can't do. I was particularly concerned by the idea.
There aren't a lot of experts, that's for sure.
I was particularly concerned by the idea that we would somehow be capable of bringing everybody back in person in the fall. That comment shows that we are, I think we, we have some communicating to do because that is so far outside the realm of what appears to be possible right now, outside of, you know, throwing up a few extra buildings in the next month. I just, I mean, I don't think people understand the reality of the situation. And I, I think that we need to be communicating a little bit more about what our, the parameters that we already know and/or suspect, you know, we're, we're pretty sure we're not going back 100% in the fall. I mean, that is all but a foregone conclusion. So I think we, we need to communicate exactly what we know and what pieces of information we expect to get and when. Because I, I was really, I, I took for granted that people were paying a little more attention than I think they actually are. So I, I think it's time to put out a lot more information.
Lisa, I would argue that people are, if there's no vaccine, that's being in the works and it's going to take months. I think there's a philosophy out there that we need to learn how to live with this virus. And so I don't think that the comments were due to ignorance, if you will. I do think there's a philosophy out there that we need to learn how to live with this virus. I just, I just wanted to share that with you because I, I just think it's, I don't want to be divisive about it and we absolutely need to communicate. I just would caution you about maybe some people are, are coming at from a different perspective.
I think that's a very good point and I'm glad you brought that up. But I also think that then we need to be abundantly clear that we're not going to break state law in order to hold school in the fall. We need, I, I think there's, people don't, you know, this is, God, this is such a good, this is, public comment tonight was, with all due respect, a really good argument for civics in our high school because I think that people don't always understand the role that we play versus the role the state plays versus the role the federal government plays. And I just heard so many misperceptions in the public comments tonight that I'm concerned that we have a lot more work to do on communication than we've ever had before. And we've always struggled to get our message out and to educate people about what it is we do and how we do it. And that's true across the board. It's not just true with, with COVID. So I, I just, it's frustrating. It's frustrating. And I think the only thing we can do is keep repeating the facts, say what we know, say what we don't know, say when we're going to know those pieces that, you know, are most important to people, that we don't yet know, and then repeat.
Yep. Yep. Ann-Louise? You're on mute.
Ann-Louise, you're on mute.
Sorry, I agree with all that. Well said, Lisa. I don't need to repeat that. But I did have a question. You had shared that article earlier today. I think it was from a school committee member in Amherst. And so my question was this, no question that these, you know, state's going to come up with the guidance they are going to come up with. Those words, 85 to 90% directive, were concerning because there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution necessarily. And we don't know what they're going to offer as guidance until they offer it. But I do think it's important to advocate for some degree of local independence in terms of implementation to determine what will be not only most effective but most efficient in our own community. And so I guess I would ask that, since you sit on the MASs and I can't remember when your presidency ends, did it? You're still there?
Yeah, it can end soon enough.
Can end soon enough, that, that we advocate for some degree of local authority over how best. I mean, every school district has different building configurations, different class configurations, which could translate into different social distancing requirements. And, you know, it isn't really clear how that would all be handled. Some schools may have the ability to bring back more children than, than we do or vice versa. And then there's the transportation Pandora's box. So it does feel like there should be more latitude within local districts to decide how best to implement relative to state guidelines. That's it.
Dawn?
Brad, just to be clear, they, your understanding from that Zoom call with the Commissioner of Education is there's three scenarios and the most likely is the hybrid 50-50 model, but there is a scenario where we go back full-time but with social distancing? Is that correct?
That is, at some point in time, we will be going back with social distancing 100%. I think that's a, that's an assumption that we're all working under. I think the question is not if, it's when.
Okay. And then my next question was, you said 80 to 90% directive or prescriptive?
I said prescriptive, not directive.
Prescriptive, thank you.
He used that word very often. He did not use the word directive. I, I'm not sure. You might be able to tell me what the difference is.
I think I have an idea, but my.
He was very clear, but he used the word prescriptive.
Importantly, did you get a sense of which 10 to 20% would not be prescriptive?
No.
You did not yet? Okay.
Peter was on the call, Peter was on the call as well. Well, he was very vague.
Okay. And I've seen some school districts considering with their hybrid 50-50 model distinguishing or prioritizing a certain age group. Some schools would argue that it's more important to get the older kids in for more live instruction and some school districts might argue that it's more important to get the younger kids in for more live instruction. Are we going to get any guidance like that from DESI?
I have absolutely no idea, Dawn.
Okay.
I can tell you that when we are looking at our 50-50 scenarios, we're not just looking at them assuming that each school will be 50-50, but we're also considering district-wide 50-50 and what that might look like. That would, that obviously has super-high level, super-higher levels of complexity. But it's, it's not an option that, it's not, it's an option that's not, that, that we have not taken off the table.
Okay. And just to be clear, what we expect to get on June 15th?
Guidance.
It's just.
That's all I can tell you.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
That is 85% prescriptive.
Did he indicate that it may change over the 60 or 75 days through the summer, that they're going to continue to revisit it as the situation changes?
I don't think anybody specifically asked that question.
I think he did indicate it's draft guidance. So I think there is some iteration going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
And he's also trying to, because that working group that he had formed that now has grown to about 45 different constituencies, they aren't going to be done when this draft guidance comes out. So, because they are taking longer. So that's one of the reasons why he's calling, in my opinion, this is kind of, this is, he, he never said this, never. This is kind of my opinion, but that's one of the reasons why he's calling it a draft guidance.
Okay. Would it be possible if this is coming out on June 15th, so we don't have to hold the information until our next meeting on June 18th? Would it be possible to post a link to the DESI guidelines that come out on June 15th, maybe on our website?
The week of June 15th.
Yeah, he said the week.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got it.
As soon as they come out, I'll post them.
Thank you.
Joan?
Hi, I just have a couple of things. First, I'm wondering, Peter and Brad, whether in your conversations about groups coming back, were we contemplating a 50-50 model? Whether you have considered our elementary French immersion programs? Because immersion is the operative word there. And in my unscholarly view, and I didn't have children in French, Ann-Louise can probably speak to this better than I can, or Cynthia, those kids need to be immersed in the language in order to have, in order to learn the language. So I'm wondering, in your contemplations about placement in classroom, whether you've talked about the priority of having French students in the classroom?
So we, we have talked about a number of different scenarios that include that within our entire student body, some of our student body may be 100% remote, whether they have family members who are at high risk or whether they had, they themselves have, are immunocompromised or other concerns. We also expect that we will have students who should be in school all day. And that, so both of those, and, and that includes specialized programming, whether it be our programs themselves or our, our special education services. So there may be some students who, as Meg described in her ESY presentation, you know, remote learning and, you know, just has not been, you know, has not worked. And while that is true to a certain extent for all students, it is true to an extreme case for some of our students in special education. So we are looking at that as an option for, so that there would, I suspect in a 50-50 model, there will be some students who are out all the time and who, some students who are in all the time.
So in your contemplations, have you talked about French immersion at the elementary level?
I have not.
About that being a priority of them being in the classroom?
I have not. But I, but I, I'm not privy to all the conversations that are happening at Placentino and Miller. So I can follow up for you.
Okay, great. And earlier we were talking about communicating to the community. We have a statement coming out from the school committee, which will come out later tonight or tomorrow. But we will be doing a newsletter next time. And that, the, the public commentary was very informative, to Lisa's point, as to what we, we need to communicate. But it, to anybody listening or looking at this on demand, if you have questions that you want answers to, just email us or Facebook us because we don't know what you're wondering about. You know, even those of us that are, are working remotely or at home, not working, the school committee is very busy. We've got a lot going on and we're in the middle of this. We're in the thick of it. So it's very difficult for, to put ourselves in a position where we're not in the thick of it or we don't have this institutional knowledge. So please do come to us with questions and come to us with your concerns because that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Stacy, if I could, before we close the COVID-19 comments, I did want to announce that the third and final. comments, I did want to announce that the third and final pandemic, pande- parenting during the pandemic, transitioning to summer, is planned for Tuesday, June ninth, which is next Tuesday. And that will include Dave Keim. Meg Camery and I will be co-moderator, co-moderating again. And we will have, I'm trying to think, and Dr. Nami Turk will be back. We're also going to be highlighting some town services that are available during the summer, such as the Holliston Public Library, the Holliston Youth and Family Services. And Jackie Weiner will be there to talk about that, as well as the rec department. So we're, and we're going to be talking a lot about some tips for parents to perhaps help their child take this very awkward transition that they're about to go through. Because they, they have this view of, they have this traditional view of what the end of school looks like with field days and with field trips and with the final day where they get the party with their teacher at the elementary level. And they get in the buses and we wave goodbye to them, and then summer starts. And there's, I have a, I went by a sign the other day that, at this tire place near me that puts funny signs up, and it said, "Three weeks till summer." And then it says, "Oh, wait, never mind," or something like that. Which basically kind of puts in mind that this really awesome, clear transition between school and summer is also going to be very, very different for our children. And that, some ideas to help people transition through that. So that pandemic parenting Zoom session is going to be on June ninth at seven P M.
Great, thank you. Ann-Louise, I, you already spoke to the select board, correct? So can I keep moving and we'll do budget at its normal time?
Yeah, that's totally fine. I didn't really speak to him. I'll explain that later, but yeah.
Okay. Dawn?
I think this would fall under COVID update, so I just wanted to bring it up now. In the past, we had updates on how many, the percentage making connections at each school. Do we have an update like that now, or will we do one, one more before the school year ends? So that was one question. And the second question was, I, I was aware of a parent and student survey remark regarding remote instruction that went out at the Adams level. Do we have something similar that's gone out at Placentino, Miller, or the high school? For parents at Placentino or Miller?
I can, I have to tell you, our, our senior admin team meetings that start at three, and I really, they happen on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I work very hard to get them done by five, have been almost completely overtaken with planning. So we actually have been a little remiss in, in getting the reports out from our schools on the numbers. So I will, I will poll them and get that information to you.
Thank you.
Peter, do you have something, do you have any information about parent surveys?
I was trying to get confirmation from Dave and Jamie about a survey. I think the elementary was doing a survey. I know we, as a district, are going to do a survey of, of parents around.
Jamie texted me yes, whatever that means. I don't know.
Oh, she said we already did one. But we are going to do another survey at the end of the year to kind of get people's input on what went well as far as remote learning, what didn't go well, what considerations they want us to consider as we, you know, plan for potential remote learning or hybrid learning in, in, in the fall. So there'll be, there'll be a district-wide survey, but yes, the, the elementary schools did, did a survey as well.
And at this point, is there any discussion about adding parents to some of these task force? Because they think that parent voice, and actually even, even, you know, students, especially at the higher levels, is there any discussion of adding?
We definitely plan, we don't plan to do it in the next, like, a couple of weeks, but we definitely plan to pull parents and, and students into the mix as well. As we, we're just kind of getting these groups going and kind of identifying some of the considerations in these various factors, as well as really digging in initially at the educator level about what, what, what are our initial reflections and adjustments that we're looking as far as remote learning, as well as we're trying to kind of dig into some of the budget implications, because we know that that information is, you know, our best predictions on what things are going to cost is necessary at the earlier level. So that's where we're at. But we definitely plan to, to, to pull in, pull in parents as well.
You let us know, Peter. I've got a list a mile long already for you. You just let us know.
And I think part of that survey we do right towards the end of the year will be asking for people who are interested as well. And we do appreciate people who are already doing some work and they're sharing some of their perspectives. So please continue to do that as well, but we will do that formally.
Great, thank you. So, any other questions about COVID? Okay, let's turn to a happier topic and jump right up to the top of the agenda and talk about our meeting minutes. Okay, any questions, comments, changes to the meeting minutes from May fourteenth? Joan?
I just had a few edits, which I forgot to send to Lisa before the meeting. I just wanted to mention that I had a few just nits, and I sent them to her. So when we make the motion, it needs to be as amended.
Okay.
Nothing substantive.
Okay, any, nothing. Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve the school committee regular, regular session minutes from May fourteenth?
Moved by John.
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by John, seconded by Cynthia. All in favor, Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Honesty?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Great, thank you. Okay, we are going to go down to policy. We have been busy little bees, so I am going to turn this over to Cynthia, who has been an awesome chair of policy. I just need to share that with her, because we've been on it for a couple of years now, and you are doing an awesome job, and you need to be-
Thank you.
Commended. So thank you.
Thank you. So in your packet, there's three policies that are up for revision. I guess I'll start with policy J K A A, which is prevention of physical restraint of students and requirements if used. And there's a number of additions to this policy. I'm trying to remember, do I have to read all of this? Or you all have an appetite for me to read all of this? Dawn, who says, does the lawyer say I need to read the whole thing?
I'm going to defer to Brad on this. I don't know.
If I have to, I'll read it.
Your policy says that new policies must be read. It doesn't say anything about amendment.
That's what I thought.
Being read.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've had something really this substantive to like, to change. But I wondered if anybody had any questions about policy J K A A regarding any of the additions that were made in reference to staff training, methods of prevention of student violence and self-injurious behavior and suicide, prevention of dangerous behavior, and methods of engaging parents and youth in discussions about restraint and prevention. Anybody? I'm trying to look around the room. Hold on, I gotta scroll through.
Lisa.
No, Lisa.
Yeah, so I just have a question about, I know that we, there's a provision in here to notify parents, right? But I'm wondering if that's complicated by the idea that we're adding in this physical escort distinction now? Because there could be such a fine line between physical restraint and physical escort that it makes it where we end up calling a lot more things physical escort, and then we don't have to report them to parents. I'm just a little concerned about that distinction.
Okay, so on, that's where, that's where we have added the section where it says methods of engaging parent and youth in the discussions. So it's, there is that discussion about modeling and of, of what a, what a physical escort would be. So it explains a lot more in detail, so that it's sort of preventing us getting to a point of physical restraint. But there is a parent communication piece in here, here. Prior to the level of, you know,
Right.
That's prior to the level of there being an actual physical restraint itself.
Right, but there can be a physical escort without the need to notify a parent?
That is true, but I think that that's where we're trying to mitigate by saying that we're engaging parents in those conversations regarding they're either behind, behind a behavioral support plan or I E P in those discussions. So that if, if they do, are having to do a physical escort, then parents are aware what a physical escort should look like. So we're just providing them more education.
Okay, I'm just wondering if maybe we could have some kind of provision where, I mean, I'm just thinking from some parents present, you know, I don't have any, this has never been an issue for us, but I'm just wondering if some, there's, I think, there could be instances where you would want to let parents know, hey, we're doing physical, physical escort is necessary on your child on a frequent basis. Or I just, I don't want to say that we don't have to ever report physical escort. I'm a little, I don't know, I'm just hesitant on that.
There's no, there's no legal report, like, the reporting is, is based on a physical restraint, not based on a physical escort? But that is a way in that conversation.
But the difference between a physical escort and physical restraint could still be, even though you've gone to great pains to define it, I feel like it could still be in the eye of the beholder in a lot of instances.
And I can't tell you how many times I've grabbed a kindergartner's hand and said, "Come now, come now. Okay, we're going this way. Come on." If I had to do a report every time I did that, holy smoke.
No, no. Obviously, obviously not. Obviously, that's not what I'm talking about. But we do have some kids with behavioral-
You can't distinguish. It's very difficult to distinguish the two.
I know, but I'm just concerned that when you have kids with behavioral issues and you are having to, they are getting, if, if they are subject to escort on a pretty regular basis, I feel like maybe there should be some mechanism for making sure parents are aware of that.
Well, there, but there, there, there is. So Lisa, in the section where it talks about methods of engaging parent and youth in discussions about restraint prevention, it talks about H P S encourages an educational partnership with parents' guardians. Physical management of a student should be discussed with parents or guardians within the parameters of a behavioral support plan or individualized education program, which may include a crisis plan. An appropriate provider shall model the use of various physical interventions prior to implementation whenever possible. So there is a component of there of communicating with parents.
And can I let Brad jump in here too?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I, so there's a couple of things. I, I actually, the training and the, that we provide our staff, the fine line between a physical escort and a physical restraint is not fine. It is very, they are very, very different. And we work very hard to provide training to our staff in that regard. I can also, I, I caution the committee about trying to write profession, good professional judgment into policy. I would agree with you, Lisa, that there are times when a student is, who is requiring more physical escorts, that it would be good professional judgment to inform the parent of that. But I also, and that base, that base, that's based on the way the student presents, the way some of the student history and some, and those types of factors. I, so I think, I don't think this excludes the need to do that. I think it, it leaves that at the hands of our, our, our special educators. Having said that, even if a parent disagreed, I think in the, either the behavior plan or the, if there were, if, if this were a student who required this type of behavior plan, or even a crisis intervention plan, or on the I E P, that notification could be written into that document at the parent's request. So there, there, there are ways to, to somewhat, if you will, mandate communication between school and parent through those vehicles that are, that are developed on a student-by-student basis.
Any other questions? Joan?
Thank you for all this work, Cynthia. Third paragraph, your first, your first edit, it just needs a period at the end. I'm confused about the following sentence, and I appreciate that. I went and looked up the C O T A mass reg that, that was referenced in here, because I wanted to see what Dessie says versus what we had. And, and you did a very good job of tracking Dessie's, excuse me, the, the mass reg regarding this. And I'm confused about one sentence, and I'm wondering whether you can explain it to me. And if you can, I'm sure Brad can. The use of, the use of restraint may not be included in behavior plans or I E Ps. This is confusing to me, because if a child has sensory issues for which they have an I E P or some specific trauma, that they should not be touched. Shouldn't that be in an I E P? Wouldn't, isn't there a place for that in the I E P? So I'm a little confused about, about that sentence.
I, I don't think that precludes it. We're talking about physical restraint prevention. So you can't say, we're gonna, we're going to do a physical restraint on your kid in an I E P. Do you get what I'm saying?
I do get what you're saying, but that's not how it reads, is my problem. It's on the, excuse me while I pull it up. It's on the second page. The first paragraph on the second, second page that starts with physical restraint shall be limited to the use of the safest method, yada, yada, yada. The last sentence, the use of restraint may not be included in behavior plans or I E P programs.
That's right. It can't be.
It can't be used punitively. But a prohibition could be included in an I E P plan.
That may be true, but that's not, but that's not what this, the policy is about physical restraint. So the use of restraint may not be included. So using a restraint, you can't put that into a behavioral plan.
But I'm disagreeing with you.
I'm not sure what you-
You can put it in I E P that the child should not be touched.
That is true, but this is specifically about physical restraint.
Right, so Brad, maybe you can adjudicate.
I doubt it. This wasn't a change to the policy that I was-
It wasn't.
So this is your current policy, so I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't-
No, it wasn't. It wasn't, but I looked at this policy before. It was like two thousand.
No, it's not. It wasn't added. That was, that's been here since two thousand sixteen.
So my, my suggestion is, you know, if that's a question that would, would cause you to not want to agree to these amendments, that we can table this, and I can ask Ms. Camery. Second, or we can take these changes as they've been made, since this is not a change to the policy, and also ask Ms. Camery, ask the policy subcommittee to follow up with Ms. Camery about that specific, that specific sentence. The use of physical restraint, I know this is a very uncomfortable subject, but the use of physical restraint is supposed to be used as a last resort. And it is a- And it is a, um, and I I really don't want to guess here, but I suspect that it may be, I was not aware that you could not, that you could prohibit um, the use of restraint on a student, because the very purpose of restraint is if a student is a danger to themselves or others.
Right.
And, um, so it comes, the logic of that sentence to me, and as a non-special educator and not a special ed administrator, um, is that that suggests that you can't preclude the use of restraint through the IEP process if it's deemed necessary to maintain the safety of a student or a, um, or a, or another student. So for example, if a student who has sensory issues is about to, well, this isn't a restraint, this would be technically a, um, somewhat of a physical escort, but is about to put their hand on a hot stove, you darn well better touch that student and move their hand away from the hot stove. Um, even if that student has sensory issues, if you can't, if you don't believe a verbal restraint or a verbal cue, um, can keep that student safe. So that's what I suspect Meg might say, but I don't have a complete answer to that question.
I just, I, I appreciate that, that answer, and I'm not, I mean, this and that language may track the COTMAS reg well. I didn't see that, but I, I didn't look at it, I didn't spend that much time going over the entire section 604 because it's pretty long with a lot of parts.
Right.
I just.
That's, okay, it's not new to the policy.
Yes, yeah, right.
I hear what you're saying. It sounds counterintuitive.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I hear what you're saying, it sounds counterintuitive because it's, you're talking about prevention of physical restraint, so you're not saying that in an emergent situation, you can't prevent a child from, say, running out into the middle of the street, um, or something like that. But you can't include restraining a child in, in some way or shape or form in part, as part of their IEP or their.
Yes, and I, I feel like.
Which is different from a physical escort.
So I feel like a clause to that sentence would make me feel better, like a qualifying clause that makes that a little more clear. And I'm sorry to the entire committee for not bringing this up beforehand, I just looked at this policy today.
Dawn looks like she's about to.
Yep, sorry, Dawn, go ahead.
To the extent it helps, it's 603 CMR, 4603 subsection 2D says, "Physical restraint shall not be used," this is under D, "as a standard response for any individual student. No written individual behavior plan or IEP may include use of physical restraint as a standard response to any behavior. Physical restraint is an emergency procedure of last resort," what Brad just said. But that is right within the provision, 46, 603 CMR, 4603, section 2D.
I don't. Right, and I think that in elsewhere, the policy, it language, it tracks that language, but then there's this sentence that's out here, seems disjointed, that's all.
You know, I had that reference in my head, Dawn, but I didn't want to show off.
Okay, um, I'm happy to ask you, Meg, I mean, this is a very complicated, I mean, we just re, I mean, had to rewrite this entire policy, or I did a few years ago, and, um, we're really trying to just codify our existing procedures, um, and we tracked this through the, um, the tiered focus monitoring, I'm not saying that right, Brad, um, um, audit that was just done for the special education, and we were told to use a specific policy that they, the department had already approved in Hopkinton. So we literally just pulled some of the language from that to use for hours and tweaked it slightly, but it was, um, so we, we did get approval for it, but I'm happy to have her explain it to you.
I don't need to be applying the ointment, it just.
Well, I, I guess my point is those things aren't mutually exclusive, so my recommendation would be to, for the committee to vote on the amendments as presented, and also to ask this budget subcommittee to follow up with, or me, I can follow up with Meg, and ask for some clarification on that one sentence.
That'd be great.
If it requires further edits.
Then we'll do that.
In the future.
Yeah, thank you.
Lisa?
If we are going to vote tonight, could we maybe tweak that section just a little bit, the methods of engaging parent and youth in discussions, and say something like, um, physical management, including physical escort of a student should be discussed with the parent guardian, just to make it abundantly clear. Um, because physical management, I don't know that, you know, you'd necessarily read that as both escorts and restraint.
Escort is different from restraint. So I'm trying to keep everybody focused on it's, it's not about, we define the term physical escort, but the, the, the policy itself is about physical restraint. We're making a delineation between the two things. But again, like, if you guys don't want to sign off on it, I can have Meg or, you know, someone else can come and explain it to you more fully at another. It's their area of expertise, not mine.
I would rather put this off if we could, I would rather table it and vote on it next week, it's not like we don't have regular meetings.
Okay, moving on, I have, um, policy EEA, is that the next one I have? Yes. So, um, on this policy, I've just added one sentence, we had some discussion, um, and the subcommittee agreed that if in normal circumstances, when we actually have bus transportation, not, you know, COVID, you know, outside of the COVID environment, um, that if we have an opportunity to offer seats to our school choice, um, students, that they would be eligible for transportation services, um, if they're available, um, on existing town routes within Holliston for a fee. So I just, we literally just added that sentence to these two, um, policies. Actually, they're both kind of different sentences, so if somebody likes one more than the other, we can, we can change them. Does anybody have any questions on EEA?
Joan?
Um, in the first paragraph, I think Holliston Public Schools is a single entity, but it's, there is plural. It says, Holliston Public Schools have, it should say has. Correct, Lisa, right? The district is a single entity, and we, when we say Holliston Public Schools, we talk about it as one entity, but in that first sentence, it says have. And then, um, in number two, inadequate is spelled incorrectly, that's all.
That, yeah, I, I see.
Yeah.
Talking for return to the policy subcommittee, Joan?
No, I think you can strike the word have and put in have and say, and just spell inadequate correctly.
Thank you, I was just trying to make.
So any questions on this policy? No, great, is there a motion to approve the amended amended policy EEA?
Moved by Joan.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Lisa? Um, oh, Dawn, I'm sorry, Dawn. Uh, roll call, vote, uh, Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, great, thank you.
Okay, and the last one is non-resident students, um, uh, policy J E C B. And again, just added the one sentence that's highlighted in red under number eight, uh, under transportation. Does anybody have any questions about this one? There is no other changes, so if there's any mess ups, Joan, please tell me. They weren't from this time, they were from an earlier time, which still could have been me.
Is there a motion to approve J E C B, non-resident students, as amended?
Moved by Joan.
Seconded by Ann Louise.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Ann Louise, roll call, vote, Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, great, thank you. And can I just remind you all just to, um, make sure you're on mute because I'm getting feedback from somebody, so if we're not speaking, just try and remember to get on mute, thank you. Okay, and let's jump right down to personnel, uh, the appointing of the attendance officer for the 2020-2021 school year, Brad?
Yes, um, this is, uh, remains the responsibility of the, uh, local school committee, um, in accordance with mass general laws. Uh, we have traditionally, uh, had our high school, uh, school resource officer, um, serve in the capacity of attendance officer. A attendance officer is a, is a individual with the police department who has, uh, who works with us to, uh, uh, investigate or to follow up on true, uh, concerns about truancy. And, uh, in Holliston, we use this person to investigate allegations of, uh, of fraudulent use of the, of our schools by non-residents, um, i.e. people who, um, um, who have moved from Holliston and continue to keep their, their students, um, enrolled here. Um, so I would recommend that the school committee vote to appoint School Resource Officer Brian DiGiorgio as a tenants officer for the 2020-2021 school year at an annual stipend of $1,600.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Cynthia, I saw you, Andy. Roll call, vote, Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes, sorry, mute.
That's okay. Uh, Ms., I call myself Mr. Raffey. Mrs. Raffey, yes. Okay, um, and B, the superintendent succession process, um, I'm going to turn this over to Dawn and Cynthia, uh, because they're sort of spearheading this piece of it.
The listing went out on, um, Friday, and my understanding is we are accumulating, um, applications, and, um, we need to address the screening committee because when we last, um, discussed this, I don't think we took a formal vote on who would be in the screening committee. And our recommendation would be to also include someone from the senior leadership team, um, and also a member of the Holliston Federation of Teachers. So we would then, um, i-if everyone agrees, we would change it to a four-member screening committee, um, and we would hope to, uh, have finalists for the full committee to review, um, or to interview, rather, uh, starting the week of sometime after, uh, June 15th. So what we're looking, I guess, is a, a four-member screening committee, um, two members on, on the school committee. We discussed it being, um, Cynthia and myself, but we really do need to vote on this, and are, we would ask that at least one member of the senior leadership team, um, join, and I think we could even discuss who that might be here tonight, um, and then we would reach out to the Holliston Federation of Teachers and make sure we include, um, a, a teacher within that group.
Questions, Ann Louise?
Um, so first of all, I think all that's great, um, and, uh, that recommendation came out of a conversation that Dawn and I had with one of the senior leadership team, uh, members, and I think it was a really good recommendation, um, to be able to include one of them. Um, and I guess I'd like to suggest that it be Nicole Bottomley, um, because she has a lot of experience in this and insight into the process. Um, that aside, I did have a question about, um, the process. I know, Dawn, you were looking into, um, the open meeting laws, et cetera, and the questions around all of us being able to see the resumes, which, when we left the meeting last week, I was comfortable with the process and having, um, two people from the committee do it, do the screening, provided we would have an opportunity to see the resumes. And I just want to make sure that's still going to be an opportunity, because if it's not, then there's a question, or, uh, then I have some reservations about this.
Okay, um, and I did run that to ground, and we obtained a, an opinion from, um, Andy Wa, and is that something I can share with the full committee? Okay, um, he responded that school committee needs to decide if they really want a subcommittee or not. If so, and two are designated on it, the other school committee members should not be seeing, reviewing, or calling the initial resumes and application, applications, that is the job of the screening subcommittee. If the full school committee were to have access to applications and resumes, the other five made any recommendations on who the finalist should be, it would be viewed as a deliberation, um, in violation of OML. So I know it's difficult to delegate this task, but the advantages, and I think Brad spoke to this before, are, uh, the screening committee can move more expeditiously, but also, um, the idea that it may widen the applicants, um, that we receive, because I think, um, someone spoke to this at the last meeting, and I think it was Brad, that, uh, we may not get as many applications if people think that it will be widely shared, if we're, if we're, um, until they're finalist. Um, so it's, it's open for discussion, whether we want to proceed and have a screening committee, and have it be two, um, members along with someone from senior leadership, Nicole Bottomley, like you suggested, um, and someone from HFT, or if we want to conduct the whole thing through live interviews, um, and everyone is reviewing the resumes and we're discussing that. But I think my understanding is, uh, the applicants would be aware of what that process is, and it may, um, it may limit who would apply. Ann Louise, you're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. Um, yeah, it's, it's a tough situation. Look, I, I certainly don't want to slow this down, um, by any stretch. Um, I also think it's important for the committee to be able to drive this while getting the right input, so, um, I definitely want to include, um, those other members. How would you envision the screening process working? Like, are you each going to individually vote on them, come up with your list of five, and then it's the four, um, sort of selecting or nominating, if you will? And I guess the only other question I would have is, what do you envision being the recommendation for the number of finalists? Because with only a couple of members being able to see all the resumes, I would rather see, you know, five than three finalists, and I want to see 10, but I would want to know that there's more than a couple, if you will.
I think in part that that becomes difficult because we don't know the quantity, and then, um, the, uh, the caliber of the resumes and applications that we're going to see. So obviously, that's going to be driven by who applies, but I would anticipate, and, and Cynthia, um, jumped in, but that we would have anywhere from three to five finalists, but that's on, um.
Right, that would be our, my expectation too, but we have to move quickly, right? We have just a few weeks to get someone in, and we need to start screening people next week, that was our plan to do that starting on Monday, and hopefully start getting people in for, um, interviews shortly thereafter.
But my thought too, Ann Louise, is that if we had, if we receive in 45 applications, and we think, um, eight to 10 of them are highly qualified, and we want the entire committee to weigh in, I would want to try and put all in front of you. I guess it depends on what we receive and how many we receive, and we don't know that yet.
Yeah, we don't.
So how we, okay, that's fair, totally understand that, um.
If I, if I could just offer, traditionally, when I'm doing searches like this and use a screening committee, I give them a charge, um, and I say, you, you must provide me a minimum of, and I typically say a minimum of three, no more than five. Um, so the committee can provide the screening subcommittee with a charge and say, you are charged with providing us with N finalists. Um, and so. us with N finalists. And so you, I think the committee can select that number and direct the subcommittee to to through through the motion process, to 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 kind of guide their work to help to a point that everybody feels comfortable. I mean, whether it be through a motion or through an understanding. But I do, when I use a screening subcommittee, I've set very explicitly understanding of what I want.
So I think that's fine. You know, it can be a minimum of three. I don't think it's less than that. But I don't know if I would set a max on it, because they don't know what they're going to get in. This is such an unusual search. That's just my thought there.
I'm just, I'm just using those numbers. That's what I use. You guys can pick whatever numbers you want. I'm just suggesting you can do that if you'd like.
Kim?
I think we need to recognize that this is not the search for our next permanent long-term superintendent, that it is for an interim superintendent, and it's a very important decision. And I don't want to constrain the judgment of Dawn or Cynthia by numbers. They may feel there are only two people that are, I'm not, I don't want to interview a third person for the sake of fulfilling a number. I trust their judgment. And they will bring, as John said, they will bring to us an appropriate number that they feel the entire committee needs to speak to. And I think we cannot slow down the process by doing anything but a subcommittee. And this is, and let's just all bear in mind that this is not a long-term superintendent search. That happens next year. Thank you.
Yeah, well aware. I mean, I, I don't think it changes my thoughts on this, but.
Well, so Ann Louise, are you, what are you recommending, then?
I didn't absolutely, I wanted to understand the legal ramifications around the guidance from Andy Wa. And it would appear that we can't see the resumes. I'm still trying to get my head around how that was possible.
Yeah, I forwarded it to you, Ann Louise. Did you get it?
I did. I said I wrote it. I'm just trying to understand, you know, how we were able to do this in other searches. And I'm thinking back on, thinking back on the assistant superintendent one, but then that was handled physically. So it is a little bit different. No one else was looking at those resumes, other than the three of us who were on the committee. And I guess the assistant vice principal, or the vice principal one, while it was virtual, I think there was only one school committee member on that, or was there anybody? It was one or two. Just, I mean, it's such a, it was such a different search with a different magnitude. So, I mean, I suppose we don't have any choice. I guess it is what it is.
I would just, Ann Louise, I view this as like, I view this like policy subcommittee and budget subcommittee. You know, I guess, we task the two or three people, and they come and report to the full committee. So I would just, I would think of it that way and not overthink it, I guess.
Look, respectfully, I'm not overthinking it. And I just want to draw a really important distinction between those two things, and then we will move on and vote, and we'll all be happy. I think this is really important, because it is such a unique situation and a unique position in a very unique time, where there is a definite distinction between what this committee will be doing, the decisions they will be making versus policy and budget, is that policy and budget never makes a decision without the committee at large. And the screening of these resumes is a decision. Let's be clear about that. It really is. We don't make decisions on a budget subcommittee about things that, you know, when we come to the table, it's after you've already seen Brad's recommendation for the budget, right? So we may say, these are the things we think should stay, these are the things we think should go, but you've seen the full magilla. On policy, the committee convenes to evaluate policy, to recommend policy, but there's nothing behind the behind the screen, if you will, you know? And and I do really want to be clear, this is not a lack of trust, it's a question of perspective. And when two people are doing that for seven, by definition, they aren't necessarily capturing the perspective of seven. I do appreciate that we have that opportunity when it gets down to the finalists. And I can live with that. I can, in terms of the, you know, priorities of getting this done and getting it done quickly. But I don't think I have, I don't think my point of view on this is invalid. So that's all I want to say.
Are there any other questions? Did everyone review the process that was in the packet? Are you comfortable with that? Are there any questions or amended amendments to that? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent succession screening process?
Moved by Lisa.
Seconded by Joan.
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Joan. We're all in favor. Roll call vote. Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Okay. Good luck and Godspeed, ladies.
Wait, what are we doing about recommending a leadership team member or administrator?
We'll ask Nicole. That makes sense.
Wait, you'll ask Nicole what?
As part of the search committee. That's what you guys just asked about, right?
Want to take a formal vote on whether we will ask Nicole Bottomley to be the leadership team representative? She's one of four in the screening committee?
Do you want to take a vote on that?
Well, here, here's all my only concern. I don't want to do it in a vacuum. For example, at the last meeting, we had two very eloquent speakers who said they'd be happy to help in any way. And they were both high school teachers. So I don't want all of our in-house screening members to be from the high school. So if we're saying it's going to be Nicole, we're kind of precluding those teachers. In my view, I think we should have it a little more even-handed across the buildings. I remember when my kids were in elementary school, and I said, God, everything is so high school centric. And now my kids are in high school, and I get it. But I think it should still be a little, I think it should be more even than that. And so if we just say, okay, it's Nicole, then we're short. In my view, we're not, anyway, not that Nicole, they're all be fine. I have no objection to any of them.
So Joan, there's also.
Teachers, then? What is your, I mean, I don't, we didn't even discuss the teachers. Was there?
That's what I'm saying. So we can't say Nicole until we've made, we can't say an administrator until we've, we can't do it in a vacuum.
So the HFT is going to make the recommendation of who is going to be on the committee. That's not our call. We want them to partner with us. It will not be somebody who's on the current negotiation, negotiating team. So it's up to the union as to who they want to put forth on the committee.
Okay. Then I think, I hope they hear our, our equity concern about representation across the buildings. And and we'll have to trust that they will make the decision that's best for them.
So do you feel, do you want to vote on?
I'm happy to, but if we vote on the administrator, right now, we're not going to vote on the teacher. Are we just going to vote on the administrator and the HFT designate? Is that how we're going to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
So are there any other thoughts for the administration? We have a great team. Sorry, I was on mute. Any questions, any suggestions, any other recommendations?
I'm concerned about capacity for all of them. Has anyone had a conversation with them about who they would like to put on the committee?
They've actually all volunteered. So, so that's, that's.
I mean, they all have their hands very, very full. I just, it's a matter of who has the, who has the capacity. That's all.
Well, at some point, they're all, they are all building leaders. And I trust that, you know, if we just remind them gently of the charge, that they're representing all of the schools and all of the teachers and whatnot. And I think we're, you know, I think we'll be okay. I get your point, Joan. I'm not.
No, no, no. I'm just, you know, I'm just being me, just kicking the tires. I just wonder, too, if it stands to reason that if the person who was on the interim committee would probably not be on the search committee for the permanent superintendent. So I think that's something that the senior administrative team.
Why?
Might consider.
Why, Joan?
Equity?
Well, I'm pretty sure for a full search, we would have multiple administrators, and we would be making sure that we touch elementary, secondary, special education, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I expect that that search to be way more exhaustive, and have a way more community members and partners across the district to be participating in that, because we're looking for someone who's replacing our, you know, our leader here for 16 years. So it's, those are big shoes to fill. So we're aware of that. Right? I think all of us are.
Yeah, I would actually prefer not to vote on somebody. I would just would vote that we have a senior administrator.
I like that better. I like that better.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions about this? Has everyone? No, because everyone said their piece. Does everyone feel heard? All right. Budget, Ann Louise?
Um, yeah, so there's so much to talk about, but I'm going to try and make it quick because it's already 9:17. So first, this week in the budget subcommittee, we talked about a number of different issues. We also approved 10 weeks' worth of meeting minutes. So for anybody who cares, those are available to you and to the public. They've actually been available to the public as draft meeting minutes for a while, or a week or two. Three major issues came up, but I'm going to focus on one in particular. So I just want to cover off these other ones quickly. In the context of preparing for reopening, transportation came up as a major topic this week. It's one that we've been talking about, but we haven't had an opportunity to delve into. And the real question here is, what are we going to be able to do with busing, depending on what the guidance is from DUCY? And we don't know what that is yet. But I do just want to share this, and Keith can elaborate. If the guidance comes down that we need to main maintain six feet of social distancing, it will reduce our busing capacity from somewhere of around 60 students per bus to about 13. And the ramifications of that are extraordinary. They're extraordinary in terms of our ability to meet our mandated guideline to provide busing for certain students, as well as our ability to collect revenue, because we won't be able to get everybody on the buses, and our ability to simply physically move students from A to B fast enough throughout town. So it's, it's, it's a little bit mind-boggling right now. And the open question came up about whether, you know, there could be a moratorium put in place by the state. We, and Brad suggested that might be, that might be a possibility. And so we asked him to kind of look deeper into that and maybe help advocate for it through the MAS. Keith, do you have any updates on that one piece?
It's just that, again, it's all going to depend on the social distancing. The DMV, the DMV determined that we couldn't put up barriers between the seats, which I was hoping we could do, which would mean we could do 26 children on a bus. But now it's 13, or 11, or some horrible number. So, you know, and then if we have to, you know, disinfect between runs, you're then looking at probably not doing a middle run, because it just won't be timed. So it's not good.
So that's one that we're watching closely, Lisa.
I just wanted to, can we put that, when the next communication that goes out to parents, when we tell them what we know and what we don't know, and when we're going to know the next bit, can we go ahead and put that out there? I think that parents need to know about what's going on with the transportation situation.
I think we could say that we don't know yet what the implications are for transportation because of social distancing. I don't know how much more we can.
Well, we can say what Keith just said.
Yeah.
Which is, we thought we were going to maybe be able to put up, I mean, I think a lot of people are thinking, maybe we'll be able to put up clear partitions. I mean, if you go to, some grocery stores have clear partitions up between the cashiers and the rest of the public. So I think, you know, clear partitions look like a great way to go in some circumstances. And I'm sure people have thought about that for the buses. I mean, we have. So I'm sure other people are thinking that, too. And I think that's an important piece of information. That, that's a big limitation.
It is. It is a big one. So, I'm sorry, Ann Louise, could you just confirm that again? You said going from 77 students to 13 for social distancing? Is that what the guideline would be? There's no guy, there's no guideline. What Keith did was the capacity. And like.
Okay. But the capacity was 62 students? I thought a bus was 77 students. Am I wrong?
Buses, a bus to 70, we, we, our sizes, you know, our, our bus numbers go from about 20 at our low.
Okay, you're averaging. Got it.
If you're looking at a typical, you know, run at the, say, the elementary school, 40 to 60 kids, high school, middle school, 50 to 65 kids on a bus. So that's the challenge there.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
We don't know this for certain, but I mean, this, this is one of those issues that all schools are going to be dealing with. So I'm hopeful and expect that the guidance in June will talk about how many kids you could safely have on a standard bus. It might not, but that would be, it would be surprising for them not to be having, and I know that they have medical personnel, obviously, on their, the committee at the, at the state level. So I would hope, be hopeful that we, that that would be part of it.
I, I agree. I think it may be a little premature to be telling, you know, in that, in that correspondence, to be suggesting that that's a hard number right now. I, you know, the MBTA, Keith and I were talking about this earlier, the MBTA has guidance on their bus usage and, you know, they're running buses. So the state, I'm hopeful, will provide us with some details and some guidance. And, and if it ends up being 13, then we'll tell people as soon as we know.
Or reprieve from the mandated busing. I don't know which. I just wanted to bring it up tonight, because I think it's really important for you to know what we're talking about and what's coming up weekly. So if nobody's caught by surprise on this one, but that is, right now, that's sort of on the key list of major concerns. This second one is related to staffing that could come out of the reopening plan. And this one is really related to the nursing staff. And just long and short of it is, right now, Lynn Buller's making a recommendation, and when you get into the weeds of it, I think a very wise one, that she may need two nurses per building, and we don't have that right now. We have one at the high school, one at the middle school, and like, we've got four and a half, right? So two and a half down at the elementary complex. Did I get that correct? I think I did. So she would be looking to add another three and a half staff members to, to the list potentially for the fall. And again, this could all change with guidance coming in another few weeks. But if that were the case, it would not be an insignificant cost. It would be like another $170,000. So these are the kinds of things that, you know, are starting to add up, if you will. So those were two big items. Then, in addition to that, and the reason I was bouncing between us and the select board tonight, is that this week, it was brought to our attention that they were going to be submitting, initially submitting tomorrow, the request for emergency funding for COVID-19-related expenses. And we had thought this would only cover expenses that had been incurred this year for this year, if you will. But there appeared to be, well, two things happened. Number one, there appeared to be a way to sort of, as long as we committed and executed an expense now, even if it was for the fall, that that could qualify as long as it related directly to COVID-19. And this is all under the CARES. Um, and this is all under the CARES Act and the 1.3 million reimbursement. But the second thing is that we have been looking very carefully at the technology implications of reopening in the fall. Um, I think you guys heard a lot tonight, you guys, I sound like my kids. I think you heard, heard a lot tonight from public comment about some of the challenges around remote learning. Um, but unless we actually do bring everybody back to school, um, 100% of the population, it dictates a scenario where we need to provide a one-to-one environment, pre-K through 12. And the good news is we're really close to that, but the pre-K through two group is the group that's really not being met right now. It's kind of by hook or by crook over the last two and a half months that we've been able to fill some gaps with this group. In some cases, it's because we had Chromebooks from, um, that we, other Chromebooks we had that we were able to deploy. In other cases, parents were using their own personal equipment at home for their students. Um, Brad shared, um, some examples where that really fell apart. So, you know, everyone thought the shutdown was going to be two weeks and then it wasn't. And parents were like, wait a minute, I need my laptop back for work. Or worse, parents who, um, found themselves unemployed had to return their machines. So then they didn't have anything. And we've tried to meet those gaps. But one of the big challenges we have is that a standard Chromebook, A, is just not really that appropriate for a four-year-old who isn't typing yet. And, um, secondly, there are some real technology challenges for the teachers. The teachers initially were given Chromebooks because we wanted them to get up to speed on the devices that their students were using. But no one ever predicted a remote learning environment. And in this scenario, they are having trouble with the technology because the Chromebook doesn't adequately support Zoom. Uh, in some cases, they cannot see their students' faces. The students don't always know, but, um, that's a problem. Um, and there are other examples that, uh, the teachers and administrators shared that were very compelling. So we worked very hard this week to quickly pull together with Dan and Keith, um, and Brad and Peter, a recommendation for our, um, September technology request. Now, I want to make one point very clear. We wouldn't have done this so quickly if one piece of information hadn't come to light. Dan told us early this week, Monday, um, that the lead time was going to be 11 weeks to order this stuff. So that had me kind of like, oh, my gosh, we can't wait until, like, I had thought we might even be able to wait till June to put in this second request because we knew there'd be two requests at least for all of our COVID-related stuff. But we simply cannot risk, in, in my opinion, and, and the Subcommittee felt this way, the possibility of September 1st arriving and us not having devices for these kids, not knowing what that reopening plan will look like. It simply isn't a tenable option. So we pulled together the recommendation. The spreadsheet for this was in your packets. And the number is 343,000. The goal for this is to have it reimbursed through the 1.3 million fund that the CARES Act is providing to Holliston. We believe every one of these expenses is eligible against the emergency funding requirements and can be appropriately supported in that context so that we won't be caught flat-footed having to pay for this out of, um, existing funds. The, um, Finance Committee felt that was the case as well after looking at the rationale, um, and, and they helped us work through this. So that was incredibly helpful this week. Um, and then.
Ann Louise, I don't, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I don't see a spreadsheet in my packet. Did you?
Did you, Brad? Was the spreadsheet gone? There was this. It's like a.
I want to refer to it. Yeah.
If you, if you don't have that, Brad, can you shoot?
Sorry, I just want, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just want to follow while you're talking.
That's important. I mean, it all happened over the last, the spreadsheet, and this happened over the last 48 hours, in fact, less. And this letter happened today. I asked Brad to pull together the rationale that directly states the ties for this request to COVID-19.
So the document is in the, um, June 4th, um, Google, um, oh, my gosh.
Folder?
A folder for today's meeting. Um, it is now, it's been renumbered, uh, uh, item number nine. It's called.
It's the second page.
Is it this, is it?
And it's on the, the, the spreadsheet is on page two of that, um, of that memo.
So you guys can take.
Sorry, forgive me.
No, 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 I didn't realize.
That and the matrix lights that is going on behind your head are very distracting.
Oh.
Does everyone else see two blue lights going through Ann Louise's head? It looks like she's in the matrix.
I have no blue lights here.
Okay, there are two. I'm not crazy.
I don't see.
Kind of like in one ear and out the other, right?
Oh, oh, wait, I just saw that. Now I can see it. That's so bizarre.
People, let's focus.
Okay. All right. Well, don't.
Like lightsabers.
Okay, it's better than the bees that were like, I was flashing around the other day. So we, we can go through this in detail if you like. I gave you the high level. It's around age-appropriate devices, flips for the pre-K and kindergarteners and first graders. We think we can deploy some of the existing Chromebooks that the seniors are turning in and eighth graders are training in down to second grade. But embedded in this is our request for the Chromebooks for sixth and ninth graders. That was part of our original capital request. But we believe it's essential to put in here, and here's why. It's absolutely true that Holliston was moving toward a more, um, one-to-one environment. You know, and every year we've been doing this, but the reality is, if the economy continued the way it was, in all likelihood, that particular capital request would not have gotten approved. That we know, we've heard that from the Finance Committee. We also know that we can't open up in September without ensuring that every kid has a device. So from our vantage point, this is essential technology related to the pandemic. And that this year, the reason it's here is because we can't do it any other way. Um, and we've gotten that support. As I said, the, the Finance Committee Tuesday night voted unanimously after questioning us on the details to support this request. And tonight, if we hadn't had any other option, I was going to be presenting it to the Select Board. But Keith did submit it to Chief Cassidy, who's the um, sort of overseer of all of this stuff and working through all of the details of the funding request. But then we found out at three o'clock today that the application deadline was being delayed until next week. So I asked, I asked, uh, Mark Aroni and, uh, if we could respectfully present it Monday night because there was a lot going on tonight and it was just too hard. Andy Morton and I were trying to like bounce between. Keith got on the other meeting and I missed like the first half an hour of this meeting, which was kind of a bummer. That was the good part. So anyway, um, so Monday night, if everyone votes in support of this, we will submit it. And the goal would be to allow, uh, sorry, allow Dan McLeod to put the PO in, get the order underway for all of the technology so that we can get it in-house. Frankly, there's still gonna, it's still going to be a crunch because he really needed it August 1st. Um, and he's going to be getting it in maybe the week before Labor Day at this point. Um, but, but this way, you know, we won't, hopefully won't be competing as hard against other districts, the rest of the nation for technology. The supply is going to be a problem. I know that. So anyway, that's the goal here. Anybody have any questions? I'm sure Keith can answer.
Just one quick comment, Ann Louise, before questions. It sounded as if when I was trying to hop in between the meetings, that they may want us to vote to put the items that we've already spent as well on there. So I do have those numbers as well. So.
Okay.
Motion's made. It, it doesn't hurt to put everything.
It's an umbrella request?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I was wondering about that. So that's certainly fine. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Thank you. Um, this is great. Um, I'm, so will all of these expenses qualify under the CARES Act? Is that our assumption that all of our requests for this will, because we need this technology in order to consider having to do remote learning for the following year?
We've done a pretty, pretty good vetting job. I, the, the bottom line is, we won't know for certain until. But, but we've looked at the criteria closely. The Finance Committee has looked at the criteria closely. And we believe there's a very solid case for this. Like, it's not like, well, maybe, maybe not. It isn't like that. It's a very solid case. Um, and because of the long lead time, depending on when we would find out, you know, I suppose, God forbid, we could cancel the order. But they've also said that they will work with us to make us whole in the event there's a problem.
That was my follow-up. Because I was concerned that like, what if we have to say, oh, by the way, we didn't get the money. So now what do we do?
Because we have so many other pending costs that frankly are less likely to qualify. So that's the question.
Okay.
Joan, did you have another question? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Anybody else? Keith, anything else you want to add to this?
Nope.
So I'm running up.
So Ann Louise, I don't have a question, but I do want to say thank you. Because boy, howdy, have you and Lisa and Andy been pulling triple time duty with budget. Um, just the amount of time and hours you three have put into this is astonishing and, uh, you have my deep heartfelt gratitude for all your time and energy and passion um, for our students. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Everybody, everybody's been putting the time in. Andy was just jumping around. Lisa's been great. I mean, I have to say it's, the process, it feels almost fake because it's working so. I don't know, we're like in a dream, like, but everyone's been great about it. So.
So we're looking.
Keith, do you have the number of, do you have the number of the money we've already submitted?
Yes, the, we've, we've already spent $31,206.60. We're planning on spending another $18,000. And then it's the 343,109 for the technology for a grand total of $392,315.60.
So we're looking for a motion from the committee to, um, so the, the first issue, I think the first issue is we're looking for a motion from the committee to authorize the expenditure of the 343,109. And then we're also looking for an authorization from the committee or a vote from the committee to submit to the Select Board a request for COVID, uh, for CARES Act reimbursement for FY20 in the amount of $392,315.60. So two separate motions.
Two motions. Okay. So any other questions before we move with the motion? Okay, so is there a motion to? Brad, what was the first motion?
To approve the expenditure of $343,109 from FY9, FY20, um, the FY20 budget for the purchase of emergency COVID-19 technology.
Moved by Lisa.
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Andy. All in favor? Roll call vote, Ms. Kooshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Then is there a motion to?
Adjourned?
No. No. To.
To approve the, to, to approve the submission of a request to the Select Board for, um, reimbursement through the, uh, FY20 CARES Act, uh, fund that they submit a reimbursement on our behalf in the amount of $392,315.60.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Dawn.
Moved by Ann Louise, seconded by Dawn. All in favor? Roll call, Ms. Kooshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Great. Thank you all for all that.
Um, since we now have this as part of an umbrella request, Brad, would it be too much to ask that the memo that, that we sort of use this as a baseline, but this was written to the committee, that we now modify it to write it to the Select Board? And it include the other expenses so that we have one piece of paper that documents what we're asking for and why? I, I want to make sure the information travels together so that if there's ever any questions by, I don't know who, the federal government on what we were asking for and why, that there's, there's that paperwork.
Are you looking for me to write that, Ann Louise?
Yes, I am, sir, because you and Keith, I can't write, I might have been able to pull, like, I, I know I provided some of the content for this, but I, I can't do the, I don't know literally every single detail, I think, that's underneath the, um, the second part of that.
I'll draft something for, um, Stacy to review since she'll be sending it as the chair.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments about budget? Anything else?
No, but could you send it to me as well so I can just look it up?
Yeah.
Of course.
Thank you.
Brad, school start times update?
Um, the, um, the schools, I actually don't have a school start times update other than to say that, um, uh, you know, we, uh, we, we have folded that work into our, um, into our, um, uh, opening, uh, our fall opening planning, um, and it is, uh, you know, incorporated as a, um, as a complete entity and, uh, will, um, it will be ready to roll with the new school start times when we open in the fall.
Any questions? Okay. All right, let's move on to new business. So in right of and response to, um, the School Committee is working on a statement. I am actually going to turn this over to the Communications Subcommittee Chair.
Uh, why, thank you. Embracing the philosophy that silence equals complicity. The School Committee has, um, put together a statement to our community about, um, what's happening in our world right now. And this was difficult, I'm not going to kid you, when, when Stacy called me and asked me to throw something together, I felt a very heavy weight of responsibility. I felt ill-equipped. I felt like, oh, my gosh, I have to call Emery Renstein. I, I, I don't know what to do. And then I sat down and just wrote, and my colleagues have put such thoughtful edits into it. If we could all just take a look at that Google Doc. Um, I think the, there's a couple of things that most of, uh, folks' comments, and I'm not looking at my Zoom right now, I'm looking at the document. I'm wondering whether Andy's comment, uh, his, his, um, suggestion, I appreciate the suggestion, and I'm just curious about how we would incorporate it. Because I've gone through this meeting, I've gone to this document a couple of times, and I've tried to, um, craft a, a a way to incorporate it so it flows. And I, I keep coming. And now it's 9:44 and my attention span is like that of a gnat. So
my.
I'm challenged by how we're going to work that in.
Okay, so my, my comment specific to, sorry, I don't know where the feedback's coming from, um, comment related to peaceful protests in addition to speaking of the unrest and other issues, is that the, the piece, Joan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I didn't have a good, good way to put it in, or I would have typed something. I just thought that it might have been missing. So I, I apologize to make it more challenging, but I, it was something I just.
No, 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 it's, it's a, it's a fine point.
Can I make a suggestion?
Lisa, do you have a suggestion? Absolutely.
Can we just first?
Could, sorry.
Sure, of course.
I, I just want to offer a perspective. When I read it, because I don't know if this sells it, when I read it, I read unrest as the, I didn't read that as equal to violence. I read the unrest as, you know, manifesting itself in all forms of protest. And to me, that was the point of like, what's been happening. And it, it didn't speak to whether it per se was violent or not. That's just how I read it.
But I, can I just make a suggestion that could solve it? If we just replace the unrest with the protests, we're fine. I mean, we don't need to talk about the broader term. We don't need to, we don't need to make the distinction between looting and protests. And we don't need to get into that, you know, you shouldn't be talking, I mean, there's that whole, there's been so many Facebook discussions about whether or not you should even be talking about property destruction when we should be really focusing on the fact that life has been lost.
Right, and just that man was murdered.
But I think that we can avoid that by just saying the protests happening across our country, highlight and go on. I don't think we need to even use the word unrest. I don't disagree with Ann-Louise that unrest can mean a lot of different things, but why don't we just cut to the chase and
Call it what it is.
Talk about the protests. And I mean, we can highlight what we want to highlight.
Right, right. My only concern is that there, there is a distinction between the protests and the rioting. And, and.
I don't think we even need to get into the rioting. The rioting is beside the point. The rioting is a red herring to me.
Yes, I agree.
The reason we're writing this statement is because a bunch of people have been killed.
Yes, okay.
And I don't think, I think that the, the looting has become a red herring. It's, we don't even need to mention it.
So we don't need to conflate the issues. I agree.
I think that's wonderful. We are going to, I don't think we have any other. Is there any interest in reading this aloud before we conclude? Or shall we just let the statement speak for itself tomorrow?
I think you should read it.
Committee, yeah.
Want me to read it?
Joan, I think you should read it. I think you did a fantastic job, and I think you should read it.
Oh, thank you. It was definitely a group effort. Okay. It starts with a quote from Albert Einstein. "If I were to remain silent, I'd be guilty of complicity." "With deep sadness, the Holliston School Committee wants to communicate in the strongest terms possible our condemnation of the heinous acts of violence that killed George Floyd and Ahmud Arbery. The protests happening across our country highlight the deep racial divides that pervade our nation, our state, and yes, our town. Holliston is not immune to racial tension, and as such, we on the local level must not be complicit by our silence. Most of us leave our homes every day and have the luxury of not being worried that the color of our skin will put our safety in jeopardy. We can walk our streets into restaurants, shops, and classrooms without feeling the slightest discomfort or anxiety about being singled out, given a sideways glance, or identified as other. This is our privilege. Our neighbors and friends of color do not share that benefit, and some tread lightly among us, guarded. Sadly, these dangers and fears are not confined to people of color. The rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia, both blatant and passive, remain. Holliston is not immune to acts of prejudice against so many of us, people who do not share a common religion, ethnic identity, sexual orientation, skin color. Your school committee condemns any act of bigotry toward any member of our school community. Included in our district's mission statement is a goal of producing confident, self-directed learners in a highly motivating, safe, student-centered environment. We cannot fulfill this mission without standing up and affirming our commitment to each and every student each and every day. It is critically important that we speak with one voice to denounce any acts of prejudice or violence. Hate has no home in Holliston. The school committee reaffirms its commitment to these values and welcomes an open dialogue within our school community in fulfillment of our mission. To that end, we've assigned a school committee member to be a liaison independent group in town diverse Holliston that has been advocating for education around these issues for a couple of years. Our hope is to promote collaboration, to help us educate ourselves, and to identify opportunities for changing the dialogue and perhaps the culture in Holliston. We are discussing curriculum, hiring, and professional development through the lens of diversity, and pledge to continue learning and growing together. Please take care of one another." And I think that we heard from the very elegant Brandeis class of 2024 Gemma Sampas, who I invited to speak tonight, so well that we are, we are educating independent thinkers and students who are not afraid to use their voices. And their voices are telling us we're not doing enough. Someone's incumbent upon us to do more. And we hear that. And these are not empty words filling the air, filling the screen. We've heard the call to action, and we're committed to acting. Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I asked Barbara Fritz to talk tonight, and she did during the public comment section because she is on the board of Diverse Holliston. And I want to be very transparent in saying that we only had, we exchanged a bunch of emails, but we only had one sit-down meeting this school year to talk about some of the questions they had. And those were around curriculum, professional development, and diverse hiring. And, you know, I went back and forth with some administrators. Dr. Patello provided me some information. I was able to educate myself a little bit about what we have done, what we haven't done. And I was able to answer some of their questions. But I want to be really transparent in acknowledging that we have just gotten started. And I also want the community to understand that the school committee is one piece, diverse Holliston is one piece, the administrators are one piece. We on the school committee are not in charge of curriculum. We're not in charge of hiring, aside from the superintendent. We're not in charge of professional development. We review what is presented to us in these subject areas. You know, I think that we can advise, but it isn't, those are not our decisions to make. All we can do is work towards what we believe in and try to be a voice for the community. And I think that, you know, you heard some frustration in her voice. She does not want us to pay lip service, she said, to these issues. And I wanted her to speak tonight because I wanted her to put pressure on us. I wanted her to put pressure on us to hold ourselves accountable. Because this is something that we have talked about for the last couple of years. We haven't moved the needle at all, really. And it's going to be really hard to make changes in the era of COVID because we're going to be scrambling for the next year just to figure out how to have school. But I think this is so, such a hugely important issue that we, we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to the community to make sure that we don't lose sight of this when the Facebook, Facebook storm dies down. And that we remember that we are in charge of educating our children. And one of the most fundamental things that we can do for them is to make sure they understand the world that they live in, that they appreciate the world they live in, and that they are able to function safely in the world that they live in. And I just, I really hope that this is something that, you know, we can really keep on the front burner despite all the other craziness going on in the world.
Ann-Louise? I, I want to thank Joan because drafting that was hard. Like, it's like walking through a minefield and not knowing, you know, how to capture such a complex issue in words. And you did it very eloquently, so thank you for that. And I agree with everything Lisa's said. I, I, I just wanted to share with you what, for me, has actually been a very interesting experience. Because of COVID-19, I am living with my 24-year-old, my 21-year-old, and my 17-year-old, who's graduating with Gemma. And I didn't think that was ever going to happen again. And it's so interesting to be with them as all of this is unfolding because their perspective as young adults, but definitely adults, has been enormously eye-opening. And while I, you know, it's interesting, I'll be blunt and transparent. They are grateful for having grown up with, I think, you know, a good family that they can, that loves them and all of this, and in a community that's supportive. They have been very open about what they view as a bubble here. And it's as if they went out into the world and came back and said, Mom, this isn't quite real. And gave us a, a very interesting perspective on what's been happening with the protests. And they said that their education in college has been so dramatically different that it almost confronted them in a way they didn't anticipate when they got there because it wasn't what they experienced here in terms of understanding racial topics and the subject of social justice and systematic racism. And they said, you know, it's, it's not just vocabulary. It's a mindset and being honest about is a lot of what Gemma said. Understanding, you know, inherent biases that come just simply because you're white. And facing up to that and, and dealing with it and doing something about it. And it's not enough to just acknowledge that that's out there, that there's more that we have an obligation to do and to make a difference. So it was very instructive to me because it's the kind of thing where I'll try to be intentional by reading and doing all of that, but that's not really enough, is it? You know? And it's hard. If, if we're totally honest with ourselves, there's also a weird generational dilemma to this. And so we have to work even harder as parents to make sure that our kids aren't growing up in the bubble. It's a wonderful community, but we aren't doing them any favors if, if that's how they're, you know, and I, I do have great optimism because I know what Mary's saying, and she's 17, and I heard Gemma. And I believe most of the kids are getting the information they need. And, and, and it's funny, we talked about how Mary, I'm sorry, and it's long, but she's growing up in a different Holliston than Virginia did. Virginia was very surprised to hear there was a peaceful protest happening. She was very surprised to hear that. And she wanted to go down, but she had a conference call and couldn't get out. But our high schoolers, our 9/11 babies that are graduating this year are also the babies that went through high school during a politically charged era with probably the most controversial presidential election in the last 50 years. They are the same kids that watched Parkland go down and became burst in the multiple layers of what gun violence is really about and how that's directly tied to racial issues. So I think these kids are of a different breed. And kudos to them because they have their own measure of activism and voice. But still, we can't leave it up to them. We can't hope that it's just going to happen. So I just, sorry, I wanted to share what's just been going on in my house because it's been fascinating to see these young adults come home and their perceptions of everything.
That and a puppy.
That and a puppy. Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't mean to make, I don't mean to make light of it. As I look at my screen and I see the 10 white faces that we have, I'm not going to, I would encourage our brothers and sisters of color and even religious diversity to get involved, run for office. We need you. And I think the most important thing we can do, we 10 white faces and the white faces that are on the select board and the FinCom, is listen. That's the most important thing we can do. That's the power that we have. We can shut up and listen. Brad, did you want to add something?
Thanks. Stacy, is that all right? Thank you. I, I, I feel the same frustration that everyone else does with the pace of change in our society and the pace of change in our community. But I also have to think, I think we also have to recognize that students like Gemma were created by this community. Certainly by her parents, but influenced by the community, influenced by her teachers, influenced by her neighbors. So the, the frustration that we haven't done enough is shared by me and by everyone. But I think it's important to recognize that, as Ann-Louise implied, we are making progress and we are, we are creating young people who are more apt to recognize social injustice and to take action for that. And part of that is purposeful, as you heard about the course that Gemma felt was most influential in her high school career. And so I think while we, I think we have to acknowledge progress at the same, and in the same breath, acknowledge that it's not enough. And that we still have so much more to do and that the work continues. But that, I think Holliston has raised a pretty fine group of young men and women who, who helped organize that, that demonstration yesterday. That, and maybe the story that Ann-Louise told does, when you look at it through a mini-generational shift, does show some growth and improvement. And again, not fast enough and not deep enough. Holliston is a community whose face is changing. It's a community that's more diverse today than it was, Ann-Louise, when your oldest graduated from Holliston High School. And that is a benefit that we need to leverage and we need to support. And I agree with you, Joan, we need to work hard to make sure that the faces in these Zoom meetings are not all white. I, I can tell you that the state is highly concerned about the lack of teachers of color in Massachusetts. There are over 45% of our students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are students of color. 9% of our teachers in Massachusetts are African-American. And the research is clear that students of color feel safer and feel more connected to their school when they have at least one teacher who looks like them. And I have to tell you, competing with the communities that have higher levels of diversity for those few diverse teachers of color is hard as heck. Because not only is Holliston trying to get those teachers, so is Hoppington, so is Medway, so is Medfield. There's a supply and demand here, issue here that as, as much as people don't want to hear it, is a, makes this issue a struggle. And we're working hard to try to build the pipe. And we're working hard to try to build the pipeline of teachers of color. The commissioner is deeply committed to that work. And so I, I just wanted to share some of that, those thoughts. I applaud, Joan, that was incredibly well-written. I applaud the committee for adopting it and encourage the committee and the community to continue to fight the battle.
Thank you. I can't, I can't take credit for that. It was, everybody contributed.
Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to reiterate in agreement with, with, with Brad that, yeah, I think we, we recognize certainly we have lots of work to be done and we're just beginning to dig into these issues in earnest. I think some of the decisions that the schools have been making around what they're kind of framing the learning around, whether it's the global citizenship aspect of a visionary graduate, personal, local, global, at the middle school level, or the selection of Fountains Pinnell, which was explicitly, you know, that one of the big driving forces behind that is this concept of, of windows and mirrors and seeing into, you know, more diverse literature and giving kids much, much greater opportunities than in the past to kind of dive into the issues instead of, you know, learning in a more kind of rote way. So, you know, this idea of leveraging these pieces, these pieces were, you know, selected because I think there is a recognition, a, a clear recognition that we need to expose kids in Holliston to the world and to different perspectives that are very difficult to understand without explicit instruction and explicit, you know, opportunities and that we, we, we need to do much more. And, you know, I know that there are opportunities out there. I know that sixth grade starts off with A Danger of a Single Story by Chimamanda Aditye, which is an incredible story of a, a woman coming to the United States and the, the racism that she experiences, but we also know that it's clearly not enough. If, if kids like Gemma are not feeling that and not being able to connect to that, we know it's not enough, but it, it, you know, it definitely saddens me to, to hear her feelings on this at this point, and we know we have tons of work to do.
Aunt Louise? You're on mute.
I just, one last quick thing. I, I know we'll be talking about this more in the future, but I probably will forget my thoughts, I don't know. Peter, as you think about the curriculum opportunities and what you just talked about, there are sort of three things that come to mind. The first is a more honest and thorough assessment of what we're teaching in U.S. history and not always getting hung up in the colonial period. It's really funny, that was another comment that my kids made to me, that the pace of those classes often is very intentional and, and sort of methodical in the beginning. And then what's happening is that they're rushing through, they're rushing through like parts that are very important in terms of modern history, modern U.S., but also, you know, they skirt through frankly, the more difficult topics. And I think that's one thing. The second thing probably is related to civics, but I was, I was actually going to suggest in English literature, especially American lit courses, the selections, some of the selections Mary read this year in, in American Lit were really quite good and I think began to touch on some of these issues, but I think at a much younger age is where some of these things could be introduced through the, the literature classes. And then finally, I don't know where in the curriculum we could find this, probably at the high school, I would strongly encourage us to look at including a course on social anthropology. It is simply fascinating and enlightening and I think it would be the kind of class our kids would flock to. I really do, because it's, it's really thought-provoking when you get into social anthropology and all of the historical paradigms that have led up to why we have some of the biases that we do. And when you start to break those down and understand them better, it starts to change mindset and behavior. So that's just a plug for one course that I think could make a difference.
Anyone else care to share thoughts before I move to get a vote in to approve the statement so that we can send it out? Great. Is there a motion to approve the statement as presented this evening by the Communications Subcommittee?
Moved by Joan.
Seconded by John.
Moved by Joan, seconded by John. All in favor, roll call Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey?
Yes.
Brad, will you be able to send that out through Bright Arrow for us?
Of course.
Thank you. Moving on, Brad, do you want to go over the annual conflict of interest disclosure? And do you want to share how the committee can get that to central office?
Can I just make a suggestion? Can we put that statement into the Holliston reporter?
We can submit it to them, sure.
Sure, I can send it to them. Happy to.
I think that would be good.
Included in your packet is the annual disclosure statement that school committee members are required to sign for having a financial interest in a, in a school, general school fee. And we're required by law to, to read this annually into the record and then for you to sign this document and submit it to the town clerk. From time to time during the budget process, school committee members are sometimes called upon to vote for a change in the fee we charge parents for certain activities, including but not limited to the transportation fee, the high school and middle school athletic fees, the high school student activity fee, the high school parking fee, preschool tuition, full-day kindergarten tuition, and school lunch prices. Because each of you, and actually this will not apply to you any longer, Aunt Louise, after graduation, because you will no longer have a child in the Holliston Public Schools, so you don't have to submit this. So as a parent with a, with children who attend the Holliston Public Schools, you are required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 19, and CMR 5.07, to acknowledge the potential conflict of interest each year by having this statement read aloud at a meeting and entered into the school committee minutes. You are also required to fill out and submit the attached form, disclosure by elected school committee member of a financial interest in the general school fee to the town clerk annually. Due to the remote setting in which we are currently working, individual school committee members must submit their own form. Each member of the committee, once you have made your annual disclosure, which again entails the reading of this statement and then you signing and submitting the form that's attached to the town clerk's office, is then permitted to vote on a fee change, even if the outcome of the vote would have a personal financial impact on the committee member or their immediate family. I encourage you to please fill out the attached form, either mail or drop it off to the town's clerk's office for filing.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that? All right. And next up, I've signed a couple of warrants. The first was a school bill warrant in the total, in the amount of $537,570.40. The second was a activity account replenishment for the high school in total amount of $7,395.93. In your packet, you received copy of the minutes from the policy subcommittee meeting of February 20th. Is that the right date, February 27th, Sin? No, it was May, sorry.
Yeah, I think so. There should be, I thought there was another one from May 19th.
Yeah, we approved it February and May because we didn't have a March or April meeting.
Right. Yes. There should be another one, but it probably wasn't available for this packet. It was booked for the next.
It's not available, it'll be in the next.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
And then as of right now, our next meeting date is Thursday, June 18th, 2020. At this point, I'm comfortable with that. There's been so much going on, I'm not sure what else we need to, you know, if we need to have a meeting next week. Any thoughts on that?
I don't think next week, Stacy, but we should not start this conversation at 10:16, but we should think about setting a summer schedule. Ordinarily, we don't meet in the summer. And I don't recall in past, I know I've been on the committee six years and I should know, but usually we, we reorganize right after graduation and graduation's not happening until July. But do we have a, do we have a meeting about that? Do we, so?
I just don't remember.
I removed it from the, the agenda this evening because I felt like we were administrative in terms of what we had to do heavy, and I knew this meeting was gonna end up being late, so I wanted to push stuff. There's no reason why we can't put it to next meeting. And I was also, you know, the committee can always set meetings, you know, when we meet. I, I'm, I was a little hesitant to publish a full-year schedule, just with, there are some changes that may or may not be coming down the pike in the next couple of weeks. So I was hesitant to even.
Yeah, Stacy, do you think that you could put together, or any one of us can do it, but since you're in the chair, a proposed summer schedule?
Yeah, we have it. Brad had proposed for once or twice in July because we had never met, typically, we'd never met traditionally, and then.
I don't think I saw that, sorry, my bad. I don't, I don't think I saw that. But do we have to?
It was, it was removed from the agenda and we'll do it next time.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, so our next meeting is June 18th. So we would like for Meg to join us, number one, to just give her the best send-off ever remotely. And maybe she'll have some feedback on the policy for youth, Sin, and then we can talk about it at our next policy subcommittee meeting, which is this coming.
Tuesday.
June 9th, Tuesday, June 9th.
8:30.
So we, we can give an update for that, but we would love to have Meg to wish her well. Brad, I'd also like, I would love for the building principals to join us and share just a glimpse at planning and how they feel planning's going and what they feel they need in terms of support from us. And not even necessarily financially, but just, I, I would like to sort of have some closure of the school year, if you will. So it'd be great to have them join us. So I'd like to include them and.
If they're available, if they're, yeah.
Yeah. And I, the calendar, and I can't think of anything else at the moment, but we will add to the agenda.
We have to put newsletter on the next agenda, agenda too.
Yes.
We'll have a newsletter next time.
Okay, start working on it.
We'll have a June financial statement. That's the meeting where if there are student handbook changes, they traditionally come forward. I try to, we, every six months, we conduct a systemic review and potential release of any held executive session minutes. So I'm going to try to do that remotely with Stacy to see if any of them qualify for recommendation for review and release. I assume we'll put off, the, the policy is the first meeting after high school graduations. It's high school, high school graduation is now July 25th. Unless you folks amend your policy, your reorganization doesn't take place until the meeting after July 25th. So I'm assuming you'd put off your school committee reorg and subcommittee assign, reassignments until that date. We'll see if Peter has any summer curriculum plans to update the committee on. Also, traditionally, that is the meeting where we review the first draft of district-wide improvement goals. I think that might be a little premature and something that perhaps the committee and its interim superintendent should tackle and allow interim superintendent to have some say in that.
Brad, does Desi give any, has Desi given any guidance or the commissioner any guidance on the expectation for district-wide goals next year? Because this is, it's a whole different worlds.
No, I think that is so far down there, issues of concern.
So I wonder whether they would suspend it for next, I, I just.
No, they won't do that. I mean, they'd have districts write goals around remote learning and there's plenty, I mean, there's certainly plenty to do.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to want to definitely have, you know, goals for ourselves that propel the, the reality of, you know, remote learning and hybrid learning, but also help us to continue with the work that we're being done. So we're going to want to have that as our guide. We'll, we need to be more flexible with it, but we definitely want to.
That, that works. And that's, it's typically only a first draft that is the committee reviews and then the admin council, when they meet for their two-day retreat, which I think is scheduled in July, which is scheduled in July, they put some details on those. That should be a pretty complete meeting. There's going to be a few left-hanging chats because of my departure. You can't appoint the board of directors representative to tech or accept, so that'll have to wait until the summer. So there'll be some hanging chats around school committee reorg, subcommittee assignments, board of directors, and probably improvement plans that'll have to move to the summer.
Brad, does it have to? Is it typically those appointments? Are they typically superintendents? Because couldn't we appoint Peter?
You could appoint, you, the.
I mean, I don't mean to speak out of turn for the committee, I'm just saying, an interim superintendent, if that's super, if that person isn't internal, they might, they might not have the institutional knowledge to represent us at those tables.
I think that, you know, I think that's a possibility and, you know, that I, you know, once you know who your interim superintendent is, then you could make that decision. The tech and except board of directors don't meet in the summer anyhow, so they've had, they've all had their last meeting. I've already gotten my virtual farewell from both groups. 16 years on the tech board of directors and the except board of directors. So that'll keep you, keep us all busy for the, the next meeting.
Great. Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, it is 10:24. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Joan.
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Andy, roll call vote. Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? It is 10:24. Be well, all be kind, be patient, and we'll see you on the 18th.